Good evening. Our mission is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. It's 6:30 PM, September 19th, and I'm calling to order a meeting of the Saint Cloud School Board. Mr. Moes, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, and then could you call roll?
Here.
Ron Von Korf.
Here.
Jeff Polrach.
Here.
Al Dahlgren.
Here.
Bruce Moes, here.
Monica Segalas-Schwarz.
Here.
Bruce Henshaw.
Here.
And Mr. Chair, the record will show that we're joined this evening by Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent Marsha Beish, Directors Lori Post, Carol Potter, Gary Ganji, Amy Galerud, Adam Holm, and Tracy Bowe, and our Director of Communications and Outreach, Tammy Deland. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. First up on tonight's agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the Consent Agenda by requesting removal at the time the Consent Agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. On tonight's Consent Agenda, we have Item A: Approval of the Agenda; B: Approval of Minutes from the meetings of August 15th, 17th, and September 5th, 2018; C: Approval and Payment of Bills and other financial transactions in a grand total amount of $9,718,386.23; D: Approval of Personnel and Staff Changes; and E: Acceptance of Grant, Awards, and Donations. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's Consent Agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Monica.
So we have Bruce move and Monica second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this evening's Consent Agenda? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Moes, yes. Second maker of the motion, Monica Segalas-Schwarz.
Yes.
Bruce Henshaw?
Yes.
Paul Dahlgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polrach?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda is information items. The first information item this evening is the ESSA Accountability Report. Dr. Sylvia Huff, Director of Research, Evaluation, and Assessment. Welcome Sylvia.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jett. This evening, I will be reviewing the North Star update with you. This is the system, the new accountability system, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, so Minnesota's implementation of ESSA. As you may have noticed, when the accountability data was released on August 30th, the messaging behind it was presented and packaged a little differently than in years past. And this is because the state of Minnesota and Minnesota Department of Education had some changes that they wanted to make sure were implemented going forward under the North Star system. And they're highlighted on the screen. So the first is that this new system is changing the way that test scores are discussed. In years past, the focus, when the data is released, has primarily been on test scores, and that's why the MCA scores were always released in isolation. They were released to the media, and there were lots of reports that focused just on MCA and MTAS reports. However, as District 742 has always emphasized, test scores only tell a small part of the story. And now, the way that the state is also communicating the test results supports that as well. So under the new North Star accountability system, the shift, the focus has now shifted from just purely being on test scores and data to being more well-rounded. The focus is now on a well-rounded education and on the whole child. And so, in order to make sure that this message came across very clearly, the test results were now released as part of the accountability results. So instead of having one particular day in which the MCA and MTAS results were released in isolation, instead, they were released along with a number of other indicators because the MCA results are only one piece of the puzzle or only tell one part of the story. Additionally, under this new accountability system, there is an increased emphasis on equity. And related to that, the state has also modified the way that they discuss achievement gaps. And so, as it relates to this emphasis on equity, the state has gotten rid of the language and the use of the term subgroup in favor of the term student group. And so, whenever you hear MDE communicating about student data and about the results, everything would be focused on student group instead of subgroups. And so, the rationale behind this is basically that the state does not want any particular student group to imply, for it to be implied, that a particular student group is sub or inferior to another. And so, in order to do away with that, there's no longer the use of subgroup, the focus is on student groups. And to be consistent with that, all of our messaging from District 742 also uses the similar language. So you will only hear me referring to student groups. We've already communicated that messaging with all of our principals, staff, and others, and so the language of student groups is now making sure that that's being used in our district. In terms of the achievement gaps, and so also again with this emphasis on equity, the state is no longer comparing student groups. So historically, when we've discussed achievement gaps, we're typically discussing how students of color are performing compared to their white counterparts. Now, under the new North Star system, the state has specific thresholds set for all students. So high expectations for all student groups, and then comparing how a given student group is performing relative to that particular threshold. So instead of comparing one student group to the next, instead, it's the notion that we want all student groups achieving at 85% proficiency for math and reading, and so then you compare each individual student group to that threshold to see what the difference is between the threshold. The state acknowledges that some student groups have further to go than others, but again, it's high expectations for all, and the comparison is made against that threshold instead of necessarily pitting one student group against another. And then finally, the overall purpose of this new accountability system. So the North Star system's focus is on support. And as we go through the details of this system, you will see that the main rationale behind the development of this and the way that it's being utilized is really to prioritize districts and schools for support, and then the different types of supports that are available. So presented on the screen now are the particular indicators that are included within this new North Star system. So the North Star system looks at five separate indicators, and they're divided across three stages. It's a three-stage decision-making process. And the stages are color-coded. So the indicators in the dark or navy blue are the Stage 1 indicators. The indicators in the light blue turquoise color are the Stage 2 indicators, and the information in the green box represents the Stage 3 indicator. What this means is that in Stage 1, schools and districts are measured on their academic achievement. So the first indicator in Stage 1 is academic achievement. And academic achievement is what we typically think of when we hear math and reading proficiency, so proficiency levels in math and reading, the number of students who are at the meets or exceeds level. However, under this particular system, the denominator now not only consists of the students who actually tested, but all students who were expected to test. So that is one change when we're discussing academic achievement under the North Star system that was not the case in previous accountability systems. And so, just to make that even clearer, what this means is that any students who had their parents opt them out of testing, any students who refused to test, any students who were absent on the test day and on the makeup day, essentially any student who was expected to test that didn't actually be, that wasn't actually assessed, with the exception of students who had a medical exemption, are included in the denominator. But the numerator only consists of the students who demonstrated that they met or exceeded on the MCA. Yes?
Do you want questions now, or at the end Sylvia?
Is it a clarifying question?
Special ed students expected to test, new to country, brand-new.
Okay, so yes, clarifying question. So in terms of the various student groups, then the students, all of the students that you mentioned were expected to test. And prior to ESSA being implemented, the only student group that was exempt their first year were new-to-country students for their first year of their reading test. But now, that is also no longer the case under ESSA. All students test in all subjects that are relevant to their grade, so reading, math, and then science depending on the grade level. However, our new-to-country students, although they now have to test immediately their first year in Minnesota, the way in which their scores are utilized is different under the new system. So in Year 1, their scores are basically just baseline. They're not being included in the proficiency calculation. They take the test, but they're not included in the calculation. In Year 2, the students are included in the growth calculation. So when we're talking about looking at academic progress and academic growth, they're comparing their Year 1 score to their Year 2 score and looking at growth. And then the third year that they test, their scores are then included in the overall achievement calculation. So for that particular case, for our EL students who are new to country, they do have to be assessed immediately, but their scores don't necessarily count in the calculations immediately. All other student groups are expected to be assessed, like I said, unless they have a medical exemption on file.
So Dr. Huff, my question then would be like, parents who choose not to have their kids included in testing, they still are counted in the denominator?
That is correct.
So it lowers the scores for the entire district?
Right, because they're being counted in the denominator, but we have no way to count them in the numerator because they didn't have an opportunity to demonstrate whether or not they were proficient. That's correct.
Can I ask a follow-up question too, to kind of where Jeff was going in regard to EL students? So the first year, this is a new-to-country student, might be new to formal education ever. Doesn't count the first year. Second year counts in academic progress score, and after that, counts in academic achievement score, proficiency.
Correct.
Even though all studies show that it takes seven to nine years to become fluent in a new language. Would you expect that a district with 25% of its students in EL might not do as well on these proficiency tests as a district with zero or 1%?
Yes, so when those numbers are started to average, and so when they count in the third year, that could potentially have an impact on the score. And as we get further into the presentation, I'll show you what the state has done to try to balance that out. So now, they're including some counter-groups, as they call them, to try to make sure that certain students' data isn't overrepresented where others are underrepresented, to kind of help out the averages. But yes, that is a potential.
Dr. Huff, you have time for one more?
Sure.
Did I jump on you Bruce?
No.
Oh, I caught the EL part. What about special ed? I might have missed your answer on that.
So our special education students do take the MCAs, and they are expected to test.
First year.
Yes, and so special education is extremely broad in terms of categories too, and depending on what the disability is that the individual may have, they may take the MTAS, which is the assessment for our individuals that have more severe cognitive disability. But otherwise, all of our other students do take the MCA, potentially with some accommodations if they need them.
Thank you.
Okay, so another thing related to academic achievement is that, under the North Star system, math and reading are considered independent indicators. Under previous accountability systems, the two have been averaged together for an overall accountability score. That is not the case under the North Star system. Math is looked at separately from reading. The next indicator in the first stage of this three-stage process assesses progress towards English language proficiency. And so, the progress towards EL proficiency score is based on students' performance on the Access 2.0. And Access 2.0 is the assessment that all of our English language learners take to measure their English language proficiency. When students are taking this, after students have taken this test, they receive a composite level, and it can range between 1 and 6. A score of 1 is given to students who are just beginning to learn and acquire English language, and a score of 6 means that the student is proficient in English. And so, the way that the progress towards English language proficiency is scored is that the first time the student takes the Access 2.0 test, so under this system, it was the 2016-17 school year, so the 2017 access score, based on the student's grade level and that first composite level that they received, the state tracks an individualized pathway to proficiency. So if we have a third, if a student was in the 3rd grade in 2017, took the Access 2.0 test, the state would then calculate an individualized pathway to proficiency based on the student being in the 3rd grade and based on the level at which they're determined to start. So if the student's composite level was at a Level 3, and again, the range is 1 to 6, they create a trajectory for a 3rd grader at Level 3 that says, this is how long it should take, and along that pathway, the student has individualized targets. And so, these targets are mapped out by the state, and each subsequent year, the state is tracking how close the student gets to hitting that target. And the way that this works is that if you have a student who makes it 30% of the way to their target, they would receive 30 progress points. If you have a student who makes it 75% of the way to the target, 75 progress points. Students who meet or exceed their target receive 100 points, and students who regress do not receive any points. So the span is from 0 to 100 points that are possible. Yes?
Are we sending identified information of each student to the state?
Excuse me?
Are we sending identified information of each student to the state?
Are we sending identified information to students to the state?
Yeah, you're talking about individual students, that they are tracking, so how they know that it, which student is each student.
So these are state mandated assessments. So the state is the one who's actually providing us with the data. So yes, the state has all of this information. Does that answer your question?
So each student is identified by the state with a number, and we have the same number here with a record identified student, but the state does not know whose student goes with what number. Is that right?
So the state knows, has a way of tracking all of our students. The Mars number is what is used across the state so that all districts are speaking a common language. But in terms of the state having full access to students' names and information, they are the ones that are privy to that information because they're the ones that are providing the test and comparing how districts and schools are performing and providing that data back to us. And so, one last thing with the progress towards English language proficiency is that after each EL student receives his or her score, the scores for a given school are averaged. And then that average is then the score that is reflected when you will see the information reported out. And so, buildings and districts have an average progress towards English language proficiency score. And the way that it is interpreted, for example, if the score, if a building's score is 50, that means on average, the English learners in that particular building made it 50% of the way to their target. If the average score is 25, then on average, the EL students in that building made it 25% of the way to their targets. Okay, so in Stage 2, the indicators of interest differ depending on if we're talking about elementary and middle school or high school. At the elementary and middle level, academic progress is the focus, whereas graduation rates are the focus at high school. And with academic progress, we're once again referring to performance on the MCA and MTAS. But the way that growth is now being measured under the North Star system has changed. And so, now, the way that the state measures growth is by looking at students' achievement levels from one year to the next. And then based on the movement, the students are awarded a certain number of points. And so, that looks like the matrix that's shown on the screen. So for the last year column, that would be the 2017 MCA results, and this year would reflect the 2018 MCA results, because those are the most recent test results that were released. And so, when we're talking about last year, if you had a student who was in the does-not-meets standards achievement level in 2017, if that student remained in does-not-meets in 2018, he or she would not have received any points. If that student moved to partially-meets in 2018, he or she would have received eight points. If they moved to meets, 12 points; to exceeds, 15 points. So you can see how the points are awarded. And again, it's purely looking at movement from one achievement level to the next, with some credit also given to students who do maintain their achievement level. So no points are awarded if a student drops down an achievement level, but if they're maintaining or moving forward, then that's when the points are awarded. And something else to note is that students who are starting at the partially-meets and does-not-meets categories have the potential or opportunity to earn more points than the students who are already starting at the exceeds or meets category. And so, when we're looking at the point system, especially the average points for a building or the average progress points for a district, you can only really compare progress points when districts and schools have similar achievement rates. So when we're talking about schools that have similar reading achievement or math proficiency rates, then you can compare their progress, because that's assuming that they have a similar number of students in the categories with the same, or roughly the same amount of potential to earn those higher progress points.
Bruce?
When I look at this graphic, the metrics of this show to me that this is one example, then, of where this new testing system values the growth of students. This is one way to measure growth and to reward growth. And that's one of the big changes in the testing purposes. Am I correct in that assumption then?
Yes, because they are providing more points for those students and encouragement and motivation to move from does-not-meets to partially-meets or to meets.
Certainly in education, one values growth. That's the whole purpose of education, is to grow.
Absolutely.
And whether or not we're in school or not, education is broader than school. This measures school education, but for all the rest of us that are not in school, I think we're expected to grow too.
That's true.
I mean, that's just how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the high school students, the Stage 2 indicator focuses on graduation rates, and the emphasis is on both four-year as well as seven-year rates. And then finally, for Stage 3, there's a new indicator that has not been previously included in other accountability systems, and this indicator is called consistent attendance. And it's important to note that consistent attendance is not the same thing as average daily attendance. Instead, it is the percentage of students who are attending more than 90% of the days that they are enrolled. And, so no. Okay, and so for this particular indicator, the way that it is computed is that for each individual student, the state determines if the student is consistently attending or chronically absent. So the student looks at a given student's enrollment record, and of the days that that student is enrolled in the district, if the student has attended at least 90% of the days, then they are counted as consistently attending. If the answer is no, they have not been attending at least 90% of the days, then they are marked chronically absent. Once every student has been categorized as either consistently attending or chronically absent, the percentage of students falling in that consistently attending category is calculated for a building or calculated for a district. And so, the numbers that you see reported out are reflecting the percentage of students who fall into that category of attending more than 90% of the days if they are enrolled. So as I mentioned, this is a three-stage system, and there are a couple of rules that are also important when all of the calculation is taking place. The first is that all students are counted in the all-student group. So there's one group that just takes into consideration every student. But then, there are other possible student groups that can also be included in a school or district's overall average. And so, the groups are broken out in the third box, or the gray box on the screen, and you can see that there is a group for every student group that is broken out by race and ethnicity. And there are also groups for special populations. So there's the English learners group, the group for students who receive special education services, and a group for students who are eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. If a school or district has at least 20 students in one of the special populations, then there's also the potential for a counter-group, which is what I mentioned earlier in response to Bruce's question. And so, what the counter-group is, is essentially non-English learner, non-special education, non-free or reduced-price lunch. And the reason that this is now offered as a group to be compared, to be included in the average, is because under previous accountability systems, the state recognized that there were certain students whose data was overrepresented in the data while there were other students whose data was underrepresented. So for example, in the past, if there was a student who was an English language learner, who received special education services as well as free lunch, then their data would be included in the English learner group, their data would be included in the special education group, their data would be included in the free or reduced lunch group, their data would be included in their race or ethnic group, and then also in the all-students group. So in total, that particular student's data would be averaged, or included in the average five times. And that would be compared to a student who would only be included in the all-students group and their race category, because they didn't fall into any of the special populations. And so, to avoid certain students being included in the average five times and others only twice, the counter-groups are a way to balance it out. So now, you have students, as long as there are at least 20 in the group, who could then be included in non-English learner, non-fed, non-free or reduced lunch, plus the all-student, plus their race, and so it matches it to make it a more representative data for the building. And again, the counter-groups are only included if the special population has at least 20 students, and then the counter-group itself also has at least 20 students. And as is the case for the majority of our schools in District 742, as well as our district as a whole, we tend to have all of the groups and counter, special populations and counter-groups included in our averages. So with that in mind, this is the way that the three-stage decision-making process works. First, a school is looked at, or first the Stage 1 indicators are considered. So if we're talking about an elementary or middle school, the schools are reviewed on their math achievement, reading achievement, and progress towards English language proficiency. And the state has thresholds that are determined based on the grade level. So there's an elementary threshold, a middle threshold, and a high school threshold. Schools that are below that threshold or that are found to need support are then moved to Stage 2, where they are reviewed for academic progress, if it's in elementary or middle school, and reviewed on their graduation rates if it's a high school. And schools that are found to need support in Stage 2 are then moved to Stage 3, where the schools and districts are ranked on their consistent attendance rates. And the schools that are found to have the lower consistent attendance rates are then identified for the highest level of support, with the intention of then providing support across the three stages, whereas some schools may only need support in two of the stages and others in just one stage. And these are the types of support that are provided. So there is the possibility for comprehensive support, which consists of the continuing onsite assistance from the regional centers of excellence. Then the next level of support is targeted support. Then the next level of support is targeted support, which is mostly support or assistance from the district, but there are some opportunities and chances to partner with the regional centers of excellence. And then finally, there's more general support that's provided from MDE. And so just to reiterate, comprehensive support is provided to buildings that need support in all, across all three stages, so they need help in at least one indicator in every stage. Targeted support are for schools that need assistance or support in at least two stages, and support from MDE are for buildings that need support in just stage one.
So let's take a school district with a very low number of a particular group that in other districts might not be performing well, but they only have four or five of members of that group in each school. And, and those schools have, the students happen to be doing really, really bad. Those schools are not going to get identified, is that right? Even though those kids are doing really bad because there are not 20 of them.
So if there's a small school and a particular student group has fewer than 20 students? So if there are fewer than 20 students, then that particular student group won't be included in the school's overall average, and that particular student group also would not go through the three-stage decision-making process?
Even though that school is failing those kids. See what I mean? School A could be, have 30 kids that, in a group that they're failing, and School B could have four kids, and what the public would see and we all see is it looked like this one, this school is not failing those kids and this one is. Okay, that's, that's one I wanted to...
Thank you. And you actually bring up a good point of something else that I wanted to mention, and that is that in addition to the school's averages for a building being taken through these three stages, under the North Star system, this process is also used for every individual student group too. So first, it starts off very high level where the district or the building, school as a whole, is looked at for the overall school's academic achievement, EL performance, progress in attendance. Then, for every single student group that has at least 20 students in that group, their student group is also taken through that same system in order to see if there are particular student groups in a building that need extra support. And so under this system, again, the focus is on prioritizing support, so it's making sure that not only buildings as a whole that need support receive it, but also individual student groups that could be better supported, or that it's a way of making sure that we're capturing all students and making sure that we're best serving all students.
Does the stages and support follow the student, or does it? From what I heard earlier, once you get to stage two or there and you need more support, you're stuck there for five years, correct?
No, so the indicators are on a three-year timeline, and it's not that it follows the student, because individual students aren't singled out for support, it's the student groups. So we'll get to some examples of schools in our district that were identified in different groups. And one of the groups that you'll see that will come up is our special education group, so our students who receive special education services. And so it's not the case that an individual or a group of individuals within that group are being identified for targeted support and that we're following those students, it's just the special education student group as a whole within a particular building will receive support. So there are specialists that can lend support if it's needed, we'll make sure that we're pulling apart the data to see what we can do to best serve that student group as a whole. And it's on a three-year basis, so the identifications for 2018 were released on August 30th, and again, comprehensive, targeted, or general support. And so three years from now, they will do another big identification year where comprehensive identifications and targeted and general will be released. However, something that is new under this system is that in the interim, other schools can be identified. So even if it's not one of the main identification years, like this time next year, there will potentially be other schools across the state that are added on to the list for targeted support, because the state wants to make sure that they're, if they see smoke in a sense, that they can catch it and make sure that they're best supporting all learners. And so the way that that operates then is because this is a rolling average. So right now, the data that we'll be reviewing is an average of three years, and in most cases, it's taken from the 2016-17, or 2015-16, 2016-17, and 2017-18 school years. And so in 2015-16, the state calculated math proficiency, math progress and so forth for a building, they calculated it for the individual student groups. And the overall average for 2016 was the average of all those student groups. They do the same thing in 2017, they do the same thing in 2018, and then they take those three averages, the overall averages from 2016, 2017, and 2018, and average them together, and that's the score that they use to identify or not. And so then next year, the 2015-16 will drop off, 2018-19 will be added on, and so new averages will be generated, new thresholds will be created, and so therefore, new schools and new student groups have the potential to be identified for support if they demonstrate that they need it. And so it's always looking at a trend, not just one particular year, so that way there's more context that's provided.
Let's, let's try to let Sylvia go through this, because Willie informed me that many of the questions that we're asking will be answered later in the presentation.
Okay. So we went through that. All right, so then that brings me to District 742's accountability scores that were released officially on August 30th. And once again, these stages are color-coded similarly to the previous slide for the stage one, two, and three indicators. And also reflected on the screen is the threshold, or are the thresholds that were used to determine whether or not a district needed support. So these numbers are for our district as a whole. Based on the performance that is reflected here, these are the numbers that were used to identify our district for support. And one thing that we want to highlight and pull out of those numbers is our progress performance. And so in particular, for the stage two indicators for math progress and reading progress, you'll note that they're both above the identification threshold. And this is worth noting, because once again, you can only compare progress scores when districts have similar achievement rates. And so what that means is when we're compared to other districts that have similar proficiency rates as our own, our students are demonstrating greater academic growth. At Lincoln, Madison, and Talahi, the three buildings were identified for comprehensive support, and there were also student groups that were identified for more targeted support within those buildings. And at Discovery, the building was identified for targeted support with a couple of student groups also being identified for more targeted support. And finally, at Oak Hill, one student group was identified for targeted support. And again, just to create or use a visual to show how this process works, the information shown on the screen is using Oak Hill's data. And these are the stage one indicators. So on the left is the academic achievement, and reflected on the right is progress towards English language proficiency. All you really need to pay attention to is the dark blue bar, which is the statewide score, and the turquoise bar, which reflects Oak Hill. And what you can see from the academic achievement rates is that for the building as a whole for Oak Hill, both the math and reading achievement rates were higher than the state's achievement rates for the, yeah, than the state's achievement rates. And then when we're looking at the other stage one indicator, which is English language proficiency, you can see once again that the amount of progress that the English language learners at Oak Hill make also exceeds the average amount of progress at the state. And so on average, the English learners at Oak Hill make it 80% of the way to those individualized targets, whereas statewide, the average amount of progress is about 67% of the way. And so really, in Oak Hill's case, with them being above the threshold and their rates being above the state, because there is a difference between the identification threshold and overall statewide performance, this is showing overall statewide performance. So in Oak Hill's case, not only was the school above the identification threshold, but the performance was also above state performance, this school would not have even made it to stage two, because stage one, all of the indicators were okay. But if we did continue to go through stage two and stage three, then you can see reflected that Oak Hill, this is why Oak Hill was not identified as a building for any level of support, comprehensive, targeted, or general support. However, as I mentioned, every student group is also taken through this same process, and so they have to take the EL student group through this process, the SPED student group, free and reduced lunch, every race category. And so when you see Oak Hill, for example, listed on the targeted list, it's for one student group, for students receiving special education services, it's not for the building as a whole. And so again, the system is really prioritizing support, not just for buildings, but also for students, to make sure that we're best serving all learners. Some additional elementary information as well as middle school. So we did have three elementary schools that were not identified for any level of support through this system, and those three schools were Kennedy, Westwood, and Clearview. Additionally, all of the District 742 middle schools exceeded the identification threshold for each indicator, so that means that none of our middle schools were identified for any level of support. And Kennedy is considered a middle school in this particular accountability system. The way that the state looks at schools is that any school that has sixth grade, at least has sixth grade or higher, but doesn't have a graduation rate, is counted as middle school, so Kennedy is included in the middle schools. In terms of the high school information, all three of our high schools in District 742 were identified for comprehensive support. However, these identifications were not the result of the three-stage process that we have been discussing, because unlike middle school and elementary school, there is an alternative pathway that high schools can also be identified. So all of the high schools go through that same three-stage process, but there's also a flat rule that any high school that has an overall graduation rate or any, a student group with a graduation rate below 67% is comprehensive support. So even if they go through the three-stage process and they are fine or are not identified, there is a blanket rule that any graduation rate, four-year grad, for the building as a whole or for individual student group that's below 67% means an automatic identification. And so this is what happened in the case of Apollo and Tech. Even though both Tech and Apollo's four-year graduation rates not only are above the identification threshold, but also exceed the state, their four-year graduation rate for students receiving special education services was below that 67% mark, which is why they receive the comprehensive support identification. Another important thing to note is that both Tech and Apollo's seven-year graduation rate averages exceeds the state's average. And this is important, because the majority of the students who require at least seven years to graduate are our students who are receiving special education services and who have it written into their IEP that additional time would best serve them, so that way, when they graduate, they are ready to be successful in the world and not just graduating them in four years for the sake of graduating them. And so this designation is one that was provided by the state, but again, we know why that's the case, and that's because we're making sure that we're graduating our students ready to learn or ready to be successful. And the District's seven-year graduation rate as a whole is also above the state, as well as the four-year graduation rate for EL students. And finally, the other purpose of this particular system is to recognize buildings, districts for excellence. So it identifies for support and then recognizes for excellence. And we had three buildings within our district who received state recognitions as well under this North Star system, Discovery, Kennedy, and Lincoln. And again, any particular student group, just like any student group, can be identified for targeted support. Any student group can also be recognized for success and recognized for achievement. And so at Discovery, this was the case for our Asian students, and at both Kennedy and Lincoln, this was the case for our English language learners. And in the case of all three schools, the indicator was consistent attendance. And so the consistent attendance rates of these particular student groups at Discovery, Kennedy, and Lincoln put them in performance that was similar to the top 5% of the schools in the state, and so that's why they have received this distinction from the state. The consistent attendance indicator is also closely related to school climate and culture, because that means that students want to be at school, that it's a welcoming environment, and that compared to other English learners across the state, Asian students across the state, and just students in the state in general, our students are showing up more consistently because they want to be in the buildings. So that's a lot of data, and again, it was all provided as one accountability system instead of just releasing the test scores in isolation. And so once we received all of this information, we immediately got to work with it. We have since met with principals. We've also held a data retreat with building leadership as well as their leadership team, so that they had a chance to hear a very in-depth discussion and review of what the data is, what it means, and have an opportunity to start digging into their data. We have already started examining factors that are contributing to patterns in the data. So one thing you may have noticed is that special education was a group that came up pretty often in the identifications. And so because of that, we have already scheduled meetings to further disaggregate the data by disability, to see how we can best serve students based on disability codes and other factors in order to make sure that we are getting them the supports that they need. This information is also being taken into account and for the school improvement plans, as well as the check-ins that take place during the monthly principal meetings. So it's the expectation that we're tracking these indicators and making sure that they're always front of mind during principal meetings. And the indicators are also being looked at in relation to other types of data, the data that is not reflected in the information that's provided by the state. So there is a number of other, there are a number of other sources of information that we use within our district that are not, that the state does not have, that are not released to the public, such as our annual climate survey data and perception data, other non-academic data, so enrollment data, discipline, transportation, program data, building walkthrough data, all of that is taken into account, so we can see how attendance impacts achievement, how achievement impacts progress, because they all factor in and play a part and are related to each other. So that is everything. Thank you. Any other questions?
Monica.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I have two questions. So the first one is, so if we're doing well, so you said that we are compared only with a, no, no, hold on. My first question is, if we're doing well, and we're not identifying as a schools, if our school is not identified as a school that needs support, does that mean that funding can be taken away from that school? What I mean is that if, what I'm thinking is that if I have a school that needs support, the, the students might be doing better because of that support that is given to them. But if you take away the funding or the support, then the students might regress, is that...
So the support that I have been referring to is the support that is more hands-on, not necessarily financial support that's provided by the district, professional developments, opportunities to partner with the regional centers of excellence, other specialists in the area that can help make sure that we are best serving our students. Is that...
And my other question is, if we are only compared with the schools with similar achievement, and I am a parent, and I just want to know which... and I am a parent, and I just want to know which one is the best school for my kid, how do I find out?
So, on the Minnesota report card, in addition to the progress score, you can also see the percentage of students who move from one category to the next. So, if you would like to compare schools that have more disparate or discrepant achievement rates, then if you look at the percentage of students, that would be a better comparison, or at least allow you to get a better idea of how many students are moving from one category to the next.
So, in other words, if I am not very math-skilled parent, there is not really a chance that I can find that out, right?
In terms of progress for students?
In terms of what is the best school for my kid, there is nothing that will tell me this school is better than the other.
So, if I'm understanding what you just asked, unless the parent is versed in this data, and we have someone who has her doctorate degree and is explaining it to us, and we're all at moments in time, we can still get confused. Unless you are actually versed like that, and are actually having a conversation with someone who works with that data at all times, you could be confused, as a parent or as a community member who is looking to seek that information. That's kind of what you're getting to. Okay.
Thank you.
Bruce Henshaw.
Dr. Huff, thank you for a tremendous presentation. Clearly, you understand all of this, and we're fortunate to have your leadership in our district. Could you go back to the indicators slide, back towards the beginning? I want to make a couple of comments about this, and I'm not sure they're going to come out exactly right. I'm kind of still trying to develop my feelings regarding this. I would say that, right now, I dislike this new system just slightly less than I dislike the old system of rating kids and judging whether they are capable or not. I would start by saying I support the extra support that districts get under this system. I think that that's positive. I would prefer, though, that it would come through additional funding to the district, eliminating the special education cross-subsidy and those kinds of things, that would allow districts like 742 to put those funds to use, with the great programs that we have and the excellent staff that we have, rather than relying on, and I know that we're doing a lot of that already, you explained the things that we're doing internally. But if the state would support financially, education the way that they are really designed to under the Minnesota Constitution, we could develop those programs and raise our kids' performance. But the real problem I see with this is that I think that we focused on the wrong thing. Still, today, what's the first thing on that indicators? It's academic achievement. That's the first stage. Studies show that you don't even have to take the results of the test, you can predict what districts and what schools are going to perform well in the academic achievement area by simply finding out their socioeconomic status. Just based solely on the affluence of their family, you might be wrong occasionally, but you can come pretty doggone close on that. Standardized tests lend themselves to kids who come from middle-class and upper-middle-class families to do well. This plays well for districts and schools, even within districts, with high socioeconomic status. Guess what? They're going to do well on these tests. Does that mean that their educational programming, or their teaching staff, is better? I don't think that it does, at all. But that's what the indications are, and that's the real fallacy of this system yet, in my opinion. If the system really was based on academic progress and not achievement, that one would be up at the top, and that's where we would look first. And therefore, schools with large numbers of disadvantaged kids would actually have the advantage. Instead of under the current system, where kids, schools with large numbers of advantaged students have the advantage for PR, wealthy districts would show little growth. And they would have to be put into a support system in order to help their kids grow more. Whereas districts with high numbers of students from facing educational barriers would show growth. So, they would need the extra support. People would be leaving those wealthy districts and coming to districts that show growth. And I think, in my own personal opinion, the key thing would be that kids would be focused on growth, encouraged to make growth, and not judged by how they perform, starting in grade three, on standardized, high-stakes testing. So, thank you for the job that you're doing. I think you're doing a marvelous job in this district with helping us understand this. I still just really have a problem with the system itself.
Thank you.
Jerry.
Thank you. I too, we got a bigger presentation at the academic, the Achievement Equity and Innovation Committee, and we got a chance to ask you lots of hard questions, and I too want to echo what Bruce just said, that you not only did a good job with the presentation here, but you did a great job with fielding really tough questions, because there are a lot of tough questions about this system. I share Bruce Henshaw's disappointment with this system. I wouldn't even call it an improvement. I think, I would call it an obfuscation designed to cover up the ability to understand the good news and the bad news, and to fix it. And I think, I think our people, you and, are going to be able to decipher this system and use it for good. But I frankly think it's a mistake to suppress the information that we get from proficiency scores, especially in reading and math and science, which is where they come. The problem with using those scores is that people misinterpret them as proving that a school isn't doing so well if it has more of the kids that are coming to the school behind. And so, we want to get rid of them, because people are misinterpreting them, and I think we need to do a better job of interpreting them. That's a, that's a big push, but it seems to me that test scores, properly considered, understanding who the scores represent and what's being done about it, does tell you an awful lot. And I feel that future boards should insist on getting that information, and nobody's saying you're hiding it, the state gave you this, and you're doing the best you can with it. I don't think this system is research-based. I don't think anybody went out and said, let's get, if its purpose is to evaluate whether schools are doing well or not, I don't think anybody took a system and did some research on what would tell us that. I think they put this together to solve some political problems and focus group stuff, but this, I don't see this as being research-based. When these kids graduate from high school, they're hopefully going to go to post-secondary education. And the first thing, and maybe straight to a job, and in most places, the first thing that's going to happen to them, certainly in the post-secondary education, they're going to take a proficiency test, as a measure of how much math and reading, at least, that they know. And by golly, if they don't test proficient in Minnesota, they're going to be required to take what they're now calling a development course, what we used to call a remedial course. And in many schools, they're going to be required to pay for that without credit. And we know that the largest share of the kids across the state who are obligated to pay for these remedial or developmental courses are the people who can at least afford to pay for it, and maybe some of them are going to be on scholarship, but they're going to postpone the time that they can enter the job market. Some of them are going to get married and have kids and drop out. And so, it is not at all unimportant. And they're not going to get out of the test by saying, but, but I increased every year. You know, it's good that they're increasing every year, it's good that they're growing growth. Measuring growth is really, really important, but not if they're behind and they're not growing faster than, this isn't a question, I'm just, I gotta say this, not if they're not growing faster than a year's growth. But at the end of the day, the sum of all that growth needs to be, get them to proficient. What they're covering up here, and here I share again with what Mr. Henshaw says, what they're covering up here is, they're not actually providing support. What they're doing is providing advice from people, sometimes who are less qualified to give the advice than the people that are giving the advice. And they don't want to tell us that they're not providing us the resources that those teachers and leaders need in order to close the gap. So, they do this. And if there are people out there that are saying, oh, well, they're throwing money at it, the fact is that the overwhelming research says that when you give schools more money and they use it in ways that are proven to work, they get a lot of improvement. But in Minnesota, we don't want to do that. And so, I, one of the reasons that we were supposed to get these test scores is not so that we could blame teachers, and blame schools, and blame school districts, because basically what we're doing right now is we're taking those scores and why we don't want to see them, because people are misusing them. They want to blame the teachers, they want to blame everybody else, and avoid confronting the fact that if you want to teach more in less, you know, in less years, the kids need more timely learning, they need more teachers, they need more resources, but we refuse to pay for them. And this is not meeting our constitutional responsibility to educate all students to state standards, to all state standards. That is what the Supreme Court, now a second time, it's twenty, eighteen years ago, that the Supreme Court first said that was our constitutional obligation, and the legislature and the governor has done absolutely nothing, and we get this instead. And now, the Supreme Court just rule again that that's our obligation. If, we're not going to do that unless we have early childhood education, unless we have more support in the elementary schools, and better reading, and all of those things, this ain't doing it. And thank you for delivering it, and I'm not asking you to agree with me, but that's just something I feel that I need to say.
I think that the attempt to get to where you're going, the state attempted to address that by having the potential for more points for students who are starting out at those lower levels of achievement, so that it is more motivating for districts, teachers, higher structures, to move students to those higher categories. So, there is incentive for meeting that year's growth and beyond, because it means that you're then catching the students up to where they need to be. How that is actually enacted, and what that manifestation looks like, this is the first year, so, but I think that's how they're trying to address it.
Good for you, you're doing a great job of putting the best light on this, but nobody ever got educated with a point. These kids need more than points, their schools need more than points, they need more resources, not wasted, resources not wasted. Thank you.
And I think that one other thing that I may have forgotten to mention is that we do have the individual scores for all indicators by building for every student group in a building that has at least twenty students. And so, at the district level, as well as at every site, the site leadership has that information, where it is disaggregated down to that degree, to be able to look at performance across these indicators, to understand how students are performing. This presentation is very high-level, since we wanted to keep it as a district-level view, but we do have that information, and it is being utilized.
Bruce Smalls.
I too, I'm going to say thank you, Sylvia, very, very much. Since you've come on board here, maybe three years ago, our data that's been brought to this board has dramatically increased in quality and purpose. And of course, I can understand some of my colleagues that are calling into questions, the validity or the reliability of this, but I think this is better than anything we've ever had. I want to also just acknowledge that, I appreciate the questions that my colleagues bring up, and not only in committee, but here in the public setting. And they are tough questions, and you've heard them, and you've responded to them spot-on. And it's incumbent upon me to listen deeply, to think deeply, and then to speak deeply about what I understand. So, I'm going to have less questions in my little portion of time right here, and like Jerry said, it's not so much the questions, but he just has to say some things. And I appreciate when Jerry says what he does, and so does Bruce. I come from the perspective of having done this as a career. Let's make it clear, by sitting on a school board, because I was a teacher, does not make me a teacher anymore. And sitting on a school board, and having been a school administrator, does not make me a school administrator anymore. But those are experiences that have helped shape my understanding. And thirty-three years as a public school educator, fifteen years on a governing board, I have some thoughts. And this is showing us that education is a very, very complex undertaking. And it's more complex now than it was in nineteen forty-nine, when my mother enrolled me at Lincoln Elementary in kindergarten. It's more complex than it was in nineteen sixty-two, when I graduated from Tech High School. It's more complex yet than it was in nineteen sixty-eight, when I began my career at Nathan Hale High School in the Milwaukee suburban school system. And it's increased even more complexity since I retired eighteen years ago, in the year two thousand, from the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District. Had I chosen, at the beginning of my life, that I wanted a different career, oh, let's just say I wanted to package blueberries. I like blueberries, somebody has to package them. But there's hardly any complexity compared to education and packaging blueberries. If the blueberries aren't what I want, I'd send them back to the blueberry farm and say, send me some better blueberries, so I can package them. Or let's say I wanted to be a manufacturer of some ball bearings. And if I got some ball bearings that were imperfect, I could just melt them down and start all over again. We don't get to do that in education. We take every single child in our community, and we bring them to places that they never could have been, without schooling, without parenting, and without community assistance. It takes all of those to do that. I'm just, I'm just, I just marvel at how, after fifteen years on this Board of Education, how much I've seen... how much I've seen this district improve in its looking towards its students and their achievements, and the data that we have on them and as individuals and groups and schools, and what we're doing with all of our educators and all of our important non-licensed people in our district that provide great support services. We, this is a great school district. And I can say, I can say that over and over again with whatever credibility I have or don't have, and I'll always look at people that will shake their heads and, and, and just deny it. Because that's a narrative that gets spoken. But we don't have to be part of that narrative. Our narrative is that we are doing well, and we are, we have data that shows that, and we have data that shows that we need to do even better. You don't get to know everything by sitting on a school board. You certainly get to learn a lot. Come to this room, and it's a classroom, this is a classroom. It's not a gym, it's not a city council chambers, it's a classroom. And teaching and learning takes place here in this room, once a month publicly, and once a month in work sessions. We come as a board, and other people that come to watch us do this work are the students. And we're being taught by our educators, our operational directors. We have many times when teachers come and give us instructional perspectives, and we sit up here and we learn as students. And we're pretty darn good students, and it's because we've had some, some tremendous teaching that takes place. I thank you very much for this work. I understand things better, thank you.
Thank you.
Monica.
Dr. Huff, I'd like your extra opinion. Could you please tell me, I don't know if you have done this or if you can do it right now, but I'd like to have, allow you to give me a comparison between this system and the system that we had before for MCA scores. And what do you think that are the, the good things, so what was better or worse about this system, and what do you think that both of the systems are lacking?
So in terms of the strengths of the new North Star system, I would say that it does a better job at targeting individual student groups. And so in addition to just identifying schools for support under previous systems, so having like priority schools and so forth, this system not only makes sure that we're, that we're looking for schools that need help, but also that we are doing everything we can to make sure that we're supporting all of our students. And so by targeting individual student groups for support, it is ensuring that they're always on the radar, that they are not, that they're always a part of the conversation. And so we saw that list of all of the different student groups that are considered and that are represented in our district, and there are even the counter groups that aren't mentioned there. And so we do have a lot, we have a very diverse district. So knowing that there are certain student groups that we need to make sure are a part of that conversation, are always a part of that conversation, so that we're capturing all students, I think this system does a really good job. I also think it does a great job at recognizing schools and districts and student groups for support. So in the previous systems, schools could only, only certain schools could be recognized, and there was like an application process, and then from that application process, schools ultimately were selected for recognition. That's not the case under this system. And just as any student group can be identified for support, any student group or school can also be recognized for success. And that's important because it gets back to a lot of the comments that many of you all have already made, in that teachers work extremely hard, and that they see the success in their students day in and day out. As a district, we see that success. And so when the focus is just on test scores, and when you're being, when districts are compared to other districts with different demographics, it can seem very daunting in terms of performance, and it always seems like certain schools or districts are on one end of the spectrum, other schools or districts are at the other. And what this system does right is that a school can be both identified for support as well as recognized, which was never the case in the previous system. And I was actually, and I think a number of the district administrators were on various committees that fed into different aspects of this system. And so on, for the particular MDE committee that I was on, it was a part of the identification committee, but there were conversations about certain aspects of recognition, and that was one thing that was somewhat of a hot button topic, because there were definitely individuals on that committee who felt that if a school was being identified for support, there's no way that it should be recognized. Like, there's nothing that could be celebrated about a school that needs help. But on the other end of that, we know, again, day in and day out, the type of work that goes in into growing students and things like attendance and other factors that are just as important in learning and that helps to paint that full picture. And this system does its best to capture that and get at that so that morale can, so that you can recognize areas of weakness and areas that need support, but that there are also areas to celebrate. And so that way you can keep that balance where that hasn't necessarily been the case in the past.
So Jerry, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
A couple times you've said that this is good because it, it doesn't rely all on test scores and it relies on other things, but, so when I think of the other things that test scores don't get to, creativity, ability to analyze, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of other responsibility for community and all those things.
Absolutely.
But it feels to me like this is just test scores and attendance in a different package. I don't see where this is reaching out and, and I'm not, it's, it's hard to criticize because how do you measure those things, but I'm not, I know that people are upset with test scores because it's just one part of education, and that's sure true, but I don't real, it seems to me the North Star is using the same data and, and putting it in a different package.
So I would say yes and no, because like you said, we have to use the tests that are provided, and so in a sense it is what we have, and so the focus still is on the test scores. But the way that they're looking at them, so you know, growth has changed, that's one aspect, the way that EL progress is being mapped out now and measured is different than how EL proficiency has been looked at in the past, because the focus for EL performance is on progress now and not just the number of students who are at level six or five or four, but really seeing how we're moving students along that pathway. And again, that will help us then track to see if we know that it typically takes that seven to nine years, and that pathway takes that into consideration, how are we doing as a district in moving our students? Are we, do we need to revamp, do something differently? And this helps us get closer to that, because the state is also aligning in a similar way. And I would also add that in terms of the attendance factor, like you mentioned, that is a new indicator. And this particular slide, wherever it is, this one, is an image that was provided or included in an MDE presentation, because they recognize still that test data is not the end-all be-all, but that these sources of data are not standardized across districts. And so the state is actively publicizing and requesting that districts take into account other sources of data, and that it's our responsibility to make sure that our communities know the other types of data that we do use in decision-making, that we are areas that we are excelling, that are beyond test scores, but might not necessarily be communicated out, because it's not what the district or what the state has a hand on. So as Monica mentioned, the state mandates the assessments, and so they have all of that data at their fingertips. But as a district, we have so much more, and it's really on us to make sure that we're communicating our narrative beyond that. But it's just that now, under this system, the state is more proactively encouraging us to do so. And I don't think that in previous systems, that encouragement has been as explicit. Thank you.
Dr. Huff, what, my comment on this would be threefold, I think. First of all, thank you for all of the time and effort and work that you've put into understanding this, because it's very obviously, obvious that you understand it deeply.
Thank you.
And you've done a really good job of communicating that to us this evening. Second, I would say kudos to the state for coming up with something really simple and easy for parents to understand, and that's, that's about as far from what it really is, a little bit of sarcasm there. But I guess I, my, my thoughts on this are, as Bruce said, one of the most, one of the, the key, one of the most easy way to look at things and, and understand who's going to do well in testing and who's not going to do well in testing, look at the economic numbers within, within a community. If you've got high incomes and you have a lot of, i, i, if it isn't a very integrated area and you have a lot of two-parent households, you're going to have high test scores. If you come from an urban area, lots of diversity, lots of single-parent families, lots of poverty, lots of problems, societal problems, you're going to have lower test scores, test scores. We know that. But when you take a system like this and you put it out there into the public and you start rating schools, saying this is a school that needs a lot of support, and these are great schools over here in this community, all you're doing is you're making that a much bigger problem. You're, you're making people afraid, you're, you're scaring people away from moving into an urban district, and you're forcing people with money, only people with money can do it, to move into a suburban district with the numbers that they're looking for and the test scores that they're looking for. And it's so oversimplifying the problem. And for the state to throw something like this, which is ten times more complex and hard to understand than the system that we had before, which didn't do a good job of giving any data that was useful to parents, it just, it exacerbates the problem, it makes it worse, and it's, it's throwing fuel onto the issues that we already had. I mean, there was a day not too long ago where the judge of whether or not a school was a good school was the parent knew the teacher, and they liked the teacher, and they saw the growth in their child over the course of the year, and they spoke highly of that school. And there was no comparison from school to school to, to wherever, and I think this data is awesome data for you guys, but to throw this data out to the public where they, there's no way, there is no way that the public can understand this. And Jenny, you can write the best article in the world and trying to explain it, but it's never going to be understood by the general public, it just can't be. And so all they're doing is creating the problems that they're saying that they don't want to have out there, that they're trying to solve. So my thoughts on this, I mean, I'm not, I, I guess I'd be with the other people on the board here that have said that it's, I like it slightly less than the one that I didn't like that was out there in the first place. But I also understand it's, it's what they gave us, and that's what we're stuck with, so we have to deal with it. But boy, it, it's not doing anybody any favors, I don't think. I think it's creating as many or more problems than, than it's solving. And we know, we know within our district, in the, where I'm saying you have high-income schools or high-income areas that have really good schools and low-income areas that don't, we know within our district, it's not the teachers. We have Kennedy, and we have Clear Lake, and we have Oak Hill, which are higher-income areas, and they generally don't show up on any of our school lists where they're needing additional support or anything like that. We move teachers back and forth between schools all the time, and when they go out to those schools, their, their students score very high. When they come into the schools here, the, the same teacher with the same set of skills doesn't get a classroom that scores as high as the one when they were out in an area with, with high economic, or higher economic indicators. So anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on it, if that makes any sense whatsoever. Jerry?
There's some truth in what you say, but last, a couple of weeks ago, my son visited a school in Boston that is eighty percent free and reduced lunch, over a fifty percent minority, and they are the top, and they are, come from East Boston, by lottery. And they are the top-performing math school, K through eight, in, in Massachusetts, which has, tends to have higher test scores, and they're very high in reading. They just have so much more resources, and they have longer school days, and they, and they, they school into the summer, and they have really, really high expectations for their teachers, and when the teachers aren't meeting it, they don't throw them away, they work with them to do better. And so I, I think we, we need to separate what we can do with what the state allows us to do and pays us to do in the amount of time, and what it is we can do if we did do it. Because these kids, if they get enough support, they, they are not locked into their, their social demographic statistics. They are full of, of potential. And when our constitution was written, it was written by people who knew that there was widespread illiteracy, and that, that lots and lots of people in Minnesota didn't have hardly any education, if that's appropriately constructed sentence. And it was them, it was those people, the ones that didn't have the status and the education that the constitution was written for. It's just that the job now to take people who are in that status and get them where they need to be is higher, because what we expect to function in society requires so much more education. And so we can have an excuse for, across the state for these statistics, as long as, as the state accepts the proposition that these kids are gonna not do so good, and, and, and we just, we just beat up on teachers for, because we think they can do it all by themselves. But I, I do, I do want to emphasize that these scores that we're seeing are a, a function of what we're not doing. And that, and not because we're bad, or we're not doing our job, or that we, because we're doing our best, but it isn't the limit of our possibilities.
I think we're going to move on, so thank you, Dr. Huff.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, next, okay, the next thing on the agenda this evening, so what I'm going to do here is, in consultation with Superintendent, we've decided that we'd like to skip ahead to item three B, which is the Wilson discussion. And so I'm looking for a motion for, from someone on the board to amend this evening's agenda to move three B forward to now.
I salute.
I accept.
Okay, and then Mr. Mose, you want to call roll?
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Al Delgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polroyce?
Yes.
Bruce Henshaw?
Yes.
Monica Sigurdsson-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Mose, yes.
Okay, so then we'll proceed with item three B. And three B was a letter of intent to purchase Wilson, and Gary Gange is going to present that to us this evening.
Good evening. Tonight we bring forward an offer from Little Saints Academy for the purchase of the Wilson School Site. This offer was included in the board packet for your review. Last week, the Board Finance Committee focused discussion on that offer. I'll now yield to the Board Finance Chair to provide information related to that discussion.
Finance Committee did meet on September fourteenth to do exactly what Gary just said. We all got the contract ahead of time, we reviewed it, had some discussion at our meeting about the potential purchase of the Wilson School Building and the adjoining two parcels of land. We, as a committee, after looking at the information and the offer, decided we could not recommend accepting the offer, and that's why it's at the board level tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. And then- And then just note also that there was a meeting this afternoon with the superintendent, the mayor and Little Saints Academy. And I know the understanding from that meeting was after the vote this evening, depending on how it turns out, there is certainly, everyone is still open to continuing to move forward with negotiations should this fail. So Monica?
So can I ask the superintendent to elaborate a little bit more about this meeting?
Willie, would you want to?
In understanding the question, the meeting that took place this afternoon, and so it was Mayor Kleiss and owners of Little Saints Academy and myself, and so it was just a meeting of clarification. It was a meeting of honest dialogue. It was a meeting of, I want to say collaboration. And so the mayor was there as a listening party. All three entities actually were at listening parties and just sharing ideas and trying to come to an understanding of what tonight means and then from there, what the future after this evening could be. That was the gist of the meeting.
So tonight, we're here to consider the motion, or to consider the letter of intent to purchase Wilson that was submitted to us from Little Saints Academy. The offer was for $10,000. And Jerry?
I'll just say what I think so that whoever is negotiating this can take this into account. I may be in a totally different place from the majority of the board, I don't know, but here's where I am. I think it's really, really important that that site get used for, what?
No, keep going.
Oh, early childhood. I think we should move heaven and earth to make that happen. I would, if the administration recommended that it be sold for less than what we could get for, on the market, for somebody who would get the most economically out of it, I would support doing that. That is, charging less. To the extent that the price is substantially below what we could get from somebody exploiting it for its full economic value, I would expect, I would consider that as sort of a subsidy for early childhood education, which is desperately needed. But I would feel then that there needs to be a commitment in return, a written commitment, so that it couldn't be turned over two years later for a QuickTrip or something like that. I mean, I use QuickTrip as a bad example, but not an unthinkable example. I don't, I don't want to, I believe that $10,000 is a subsidy, but whatever the number is, a subsidy would not be undeserved if it promoted early childhood education, but there has to be some, when government subsidizes something, there needs to be a commitment back. And I believe that's possible and lawful and it could be done relatively easily. Thanks.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Bruce?
Which everyone has to get to the mic first, I guess. I don't care, I would yield to you.
I'll yield to you, Mr. Henses.
All right. I have to say, Mr. Von Korf, I'm surprised by your position. Because a couple of years ago, I was on the Board Finance Committee when the Wilson people brought forward the Seattle idea. And that was that in Seattle, there was an ability for a governmental unit, like a school district, to sell below market value to somebody else with good intentions. I even volunteered to serve on a committee to study that and to see how it applied here, but it was my understanding that in Minnesota, you cannot do that, that you have to get fair market value. And so that's one of the reasons why this has dragged on for a couple more years. The concern that we could make a deal with somebody with good intentions and the next year, they could turn around and go out of business or sell or whatever for a profit and end up with the same situation. In addition, the responsibility that boards of education have to protect the taxpayers' dollars and investments, I thought drives us to put it up for sale and find out what the value of it is. And so I'm surprised that now we don't have to do that. I think we could have solved this a couple of years ago, if that's the case.
Bruce?
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, have we ever received any other letter of intent from Little Saints Academy? Have they ever pro-offered through a letter of intent, any other purchase offer? Answer is no.
Answer is no.
No, we've never received anything else. We received a letter of...
I need to make sure we say a formal, so I need to make sure I clarify that not a formal letter of intent, like we did at this point in time.
And we did receive a formal letter of intent today, I mean, this week, for $10,000. And some people are expressing a concern about that as being an unfair market value offer, particularly to a board that has its fiduciary responsibilities as part of our duties. That's my first question. Secondly, Mr. Chair, is it public, is it, can it be public knowledge, the answers to two questions? What are, what is Little Saints Academy currently paying us? What are we leasing it to them for monthly? And secondly, what are we, what are, well, let me finish my question? What are we additionally paying on that? And how do those two numbers come out? I'd like to, I'd like to hear that. What are they leasing it for and what are we paying in terms of upkeep and taxes and everything else? And do those two numbers wash out kind of close? And if they do, and we have a letter of intent, a minimal letter of intent, where is the seriousness in this?
The monthly rent is $3,683. If we go back as far as 2013, 14, and take a look at the expenses, I think it would be, you know, you have highs and lows, but I think it'd be fair to say that it's a break-even. But we haven't had any major repairs there, just the regular maintenance.
So we're maintaining the property, we're paying the taxes on the property?
Yes.
And so that a very wonderful enterprise can do great work with children, but they're doing that because we are subsidizing that.
Yeah, and I want to, can I clarify something there, too? We do pay taxes on that building. School districts don't pay taxes, but when we lease it to a for-profit business, we have to pay commercial real estate taxes.
And then my third question, if I may. We went through a process recently, not an easy process, but one I think that across the community, I've been hearing at least, thank you, and a good job, and that is when we had the tech property, we did a complete financial analysis of that. What were the assets of that property? What were the liabilities of that property? And who was in a position to see gain for themselves in that? Is there any way that we have done or we could do something similar to that with this property? What is the real asset, market value assets of this property? But what liabilities does it hold? And does that help us kickstart some negotiations? Something that moves north substantially?
Question, I don't know if anyone will have an answer for it.
I'll just put a question mark at the end of it. There it was.
I can answer a part of it. So we have done some of that, what's the liability on the property piece. So we did have a review from a hazardous material abatement standpoint. So we did have that analysis done. And abatement costs for the remainder of the building are just over $67,000. So that has been, that analysis has been completed. Years ago, there was a market analysis report done, but again, that was based on highest and best use that requires rezoning. And so, you know, in terms of what the district can do with that is really outside of our hands, since we don't have jurisdiction to control that. Other than that, that's about what's been done at this point.
What was that value? May I ask that question of that?
Let me find the right report. So that analysis was completed in 2015 and again, was based on rezoning likely for multifamily housing. And it was anywhere from a low value range of $637,000 to a high value range of $734,000. And then the adjacent lots were valued separately and those were valued at approximately $75,000 for the adjacent lots.
Bruce Henses?
Okay. I would just caution us, because I certainly support preschool and early education also, but there might be some serious questions of this board if we make a sweetheart deal to move that property when just a few years ago, two or three years ago, there was a, maybe not a letter of intent, but an indication to purchase for $600,000 and a counter to purchase for $325,000. And now we're talking $10,000? I just, I would need more explanation of how we get from that in those few short years to what we're talking about right now. I think we just need to make sure that there is a fair opportunity for others to express an interest in a purchase price for this property or a good explanation that we can look the community in the eyes to tell why we're not doing that.
And I agree with you, Bruce. And tonight before us is an offer for $10,000. That's what we're voting on. We have to vote that up, up or down, yes or no. And I think that any further discussion as far as where we want to take it, I mean, there's an understanding that this is going to go back and it's really in the superintendent's hands, but any further discussion on where we're going with that should probably go back to either Finance Committee or to a board workshop setting. Jerry?
First of all, I want to address Bruce Henses' question about where were we in Finance Committee? At the Finance Committee, as we were discussing, so that was two different Finance Committees and one Finance Committee had discussed the Seattle plan. When it came to the year that I chaired, I had just joined the committee and I expressed some concern about whether it was lawful to sell school property to a private organization for less than fair market value. And I agreed to contact our legal counsel. I was kind of expecting he was going to tell us, no, we couldn't do it, but he said, absolutely, you can do it. It wasn't an opinion that I asked for and we were looking for the opinion, but he says you have to have a reason that's in the public interest. And he's had school districts that have sold school property for less than fair market value because they got something, the public got something in return. Whether we should do that or not is a policy question. And I'm kind of saying, well, I'm not in favor of the $10,000 because I, it's certainly not the value that we can get by the method that you're describing. But there might be a number that is fair, given that it's going to be used. You know, we've been thinking about what would it take for us to do early, there's 8,000, I'm sorry, there's 800 to 1,000 kids, low-income kids, who need early childhood education and there's a crush in the market for places to put kids. And if we had to do it ourselves, we'd be spending a ton of money to do that. The problem with this letter of intent, in my opinion, is whatever you think of the number, it doesn't promise to use it for that purpose. And I know people are a little bit nervous about imposing a purpose as a condition, but boy, I've worked on dozens of transactions where people get a discount in return for doing something in the public interest. It's not hard to do. And so I think where the chair is taking us is that we're not going to, this isn't really an offer, it's a letter of intent that would require some negotiation, but that we're going to, the board's likely to say, this is not a letter of intent that we want to turn into a contract. But I'm just saying, when we go forward, there, I believe that there will be a number that is lower than the high numbers that somebody would have given to convert it to something other than a school, but commensurate with this purpose. I would support it if the administration recommended it and if it came with a covenant to provide early childhood education.
Ken?
I like some of the conversations that I'm hearing tonight, especially the part that there was a meeting this afternoon with the school district, Amy and the mayor. And I would like to know more about that and maybe that's not a conversation for tonight, but I'm eager to hear what opportunities that may bring to the table to come up with something, an answer that is in the best interest. I think everybody at the table here wants to do the right thing, but we're disagreeing as to what the right thing is. I will say, finding the highest sale dollar, in my opinion, is not the right thing to do. I very much appreciate the people in the audience, the phone calls and the emails and the passion that I have heard, that we have heard about what they think is the right thing to do for this community and with this property. I think that there's an answer in here and sure, it's not as is, $10,000, walk away and we don't have anything, any obligation as it remaining, the education center that it is and the bringing forth value to the neighborhood and the community. But I like the fact that we're willing to say, well, don't, I don't want to put it for sale and go to the highest dollar. What I want to do is to continue negotiations and say, I think we have an answer here and we can work through this and find a solution that will bring about a positive end result.
Any other discussion, any other discussion on this? If not, I'm looking for a motion. I believe we'd be looking, the recommendation was to reject the letter of intent, so I believe we're looking for a motion to reject the letter of intent.
I'll make the motion to reject that letter of intent with the possibility that it sounds like there's further conversations and negotiating going on.
The only part I'm saying is reject the offer. What happens after that is not part of the motion. But that wasn't on the table, the only thing that's on the table is reject the offer. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just, if I could, I'd ask the superintendent if it's, if we pass this motion, would it be your intention to engage in further discussions with the view of the possibility that this could be used as an early childhood center?
Yes.
Support the motion.
So the, so if we pass or no this motion, so what's going to happen? We just?
Negotiations would continue. That's the, Willie indicated that the intent is, we would continue, we're specifically voting on this letter of intent that was included in the package this evening. If we reject that letter of intent, then Willie will be, it's kind of back to square one, but it's to continue negotiations.
So if we... So if we do not reject the letter of intent, what does that mean? That we accept the offer? Is that what it means?
Yes.
And we cannot negotiate any further?
Correct.
No, the, rejecting the motion would leave us having given no instruction to the superintendent. Oh, what?
If we accept the motion.
Oh, I thought you, but the vote on this is...
Accept or deny?
No, the motion is to reject it, right?
Yes, correct.
So if we, if we don't pass the motion, nothing happens, right?
My opinion would be the superintendent could continue to negotiate, because we haven't told him to stop. We just would not have done anything at all.
I'm really sorry, I still don't know what is this motion going to do. If I, if I do not support the motion, and let's say that everybody else do not support the motion, which is not gonna happen, but if, if, if we don't support this motion, which is to reject the letter of intent, then what happens?
My understanding, if the board says, if the vote is no, at that point in time, I'm understanding the board giving me the authority to continue or to have conversation or to negotiate with Little Saints Academy. That's if it is voted no. Your second question, well, what happens if it's voted yes? Then that means we, that we've accepted the offer of $10,000. So the bottom line is, if you vote yes, I mean, if you vote no, if, if the vote comes out as a no, then I would be, I'm being told, I'm being directed to continue conversation, negotiations with Little Saints Academy.
But, but, Mr. Chair, a yes vote is actually no.
A yes vote?
A yes vote is to reject. Now, we could change, I mean, we could amend that motion to accept, and then a no vote would be to decline, and we'd be in the same place at the end, I believe.
I think where we are is if, 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 a no vote would be, the only action would be taken is to reject the letter of intent. It would leave the administration free to negotiate, and, and that's what a yes vote does. It says no.
That I understood. So, so a yes vote in the motion to reject the letter of intent frees the superintendent to keep negotiation, so a no vote in the motion to reject leaves the superintendent tied.
Would leave him with the letter of intent in front of him.
Not knowing what to do with it.
What a ridiculous motion. So I...
The recommendation was to, the recommendation was to reject, so what I'm doing is I'm making a, Jeff's made a motion for the recommendation.
In, in order to vote, I think the way Monica wants it is somebody would have to make a motion to approve the letter of intent, and then she could vote yes for approving it, or the motion is to...
Correct, that would be the way that would be, but it isn't how it was made. So the motion was to reject the letter of intent, so a yes vote means we are rejecting the letter of intent, and the superintendent is free to continue to negotiate with Little Saints Academy.
All right, so...
Mr. Moes, Monica. Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Oh, no.
He was gonna call roll.
So, so yes, I want to say something. The thing is that we have been, so I have been receiving emails, and there are many people in the public, and we had a meeting, I was part of the, the, the meeting with finance, and what I am concerned about is that if the people in the public and everybody else is understanding what's going on. I have received several emails that have a complete history that dates actually before I came to this country. So the, the thing is that I, I really would like to, I mean, this is the time to talk on the motion, but, but, but the motion doesn't give anybody else any other knowledge or any other idea of what our intentions are. And what I have been hearing very loudly from people is that people have, wants to have more clarity about what the intentions of the board are about this negotiation. So...
That's for a different meeting, though, Monica, I really think that's...
Correct. That's for a different...
That's not for this meeting.
Yeah, but I'm speaking on my motion, in the motion that is on the table, and, and that's part of my concern about the motion that is on the table. I do realize that, I'm not asking you to discuss that right now, but if we cannot continue discussion today about how are we going to bring more clarity to this, I actually will have some suggestions. So I would like to amend this motion in the way that this, that we can assure that that conversation and that bringing clarity to the process is in. So I'm actually asking for a permission from the chair to, after we vote for this motion, we continue to talk a little bit about that process in how do we bring it up, and, or I would...
I would recommend, as the chair, is that if we want to have a conversation about the future or the direction of where we're going, that you make that a recommendation, that we add that to the agenda at our workshop, when people are prepared to discuss it, because no one came to this meeting prepared to discuss that, and therefore, and I, and I think that we do need some time to prepare for that, and, and the superintendent and his staff also need time to prepare for that, so...
I, I am agreeing with you on that, and I am not saying that that's not what we should be doing. What I'm saying is that preparation of the agenda and the time for add, time to the agenda comes at the end of this meeting, and these people that are here wants to answer us right now. So what I would like is to move that part of the agenda about the future meetings, agenda items, before everybody leaves.
So in a second motion, you're making a motion to amend the agenda, to move the future agenda items up following this? So if you want to make that motion?
But right now, it's not appropriate, because we have a motion on the table, but I would like permission...
You can do a second motion.
Yes.
And then we can do that, and then we'll go back and vote on this.
Great.
So is that, so you're making that motion? Is there a second?
Right now, I'm not making a motion.
No?
Right now, no, because we have a motion on the table, so I want your permission for a little reminder, so after we vote in this motion, we can move that up.
Okay.
You can't, okay, I'll leave it.
Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
First make.
Motion.
Motion is to reject the letter of intent. It was included in the packet.
Jeff Polriss, maker of the motion?
Yes, we reject.
Bruce Moes, yes, reject. Monica Segal-Schwarz?
Yes.
Al Dolgert?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Bruce Hensches?
Yes. Monica?
So what I would like is to make a motion that we include in...
That we move...
Well, yeah, I can make a motion to move the future, the agenda, the future items on the agenda to right now.
Okay. Second by anybody?
Point of order, Al, you can't, we already approved the agenda for tonight, how can you make a motion?
Amendment. The motion is to amend.
Something that's already been approved and voted on.
But just like we did with yet. No, she's, she's asking to move the very last item, which is future agenda items up till now.
And to include it, or just to move it?
To move it up till now.
Okay.
So we do that now and not later?
So I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, you want to call roll, Bruce?
Are we gonna have a discussion on that?
Discussion?
Here's the discussion. I will have another item that I would like to have added to...
The agenda.
Okay, well, this would be the time to bring it up then, because we won't be doing it later. Bruce?
First maker of the motion, Monica Segal-Schwarz.
Yes.
Second maker, Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Jeff Polriss?
No.
Bruce Moes, yes. Al Dolgert?
Yes.
Bruce Hensches?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move item number nine, future agenda items, for our October 3rd work session, and at the October 3rd work session, we are planning on having a discussion on gymnastics. There will be, and I want to make this clear to the board, that there's going to be two gymnastics discussions on October 3rd. The first gymnastics discussion will be during the board meeting, and that gymnastics discussion will be the next three-year, the three-year plan for gymnastics. The temporary lease option for gymnastics program, and that will give us direction for gymnastics for this year, when they're at tech still. Next year, where they would exercise, they would be at the Minnesota School of Dance, and the St. Cloud School of Dance, and the third year, where they would be at the St. Cloud School of Dance, if, then we would not have, the lease would end at the end of two years, we'd have to either renegotiate, or there would have to be another plan in place. That's the first, that's gonna happen at the board meeting, and that's the discussion, so we're looking at three years. We're not looking at the future 10-year, 20-year plan for gymnastics, we're looking at a three-year plan for gymnastics. Then we're gonna move into the work session after we finish our board meeting, and we're gonna have just a discussion on the long-term gymnastics plan, and we're gonna have a discussion. We've asked, we've asked the superintendent to do an RFP for plans for gymnastics space, but we're gonna have a discussion on what those plans are going to be, and there's really three options that are in front of us for the RFP. The first option is for a dedicated gymnastics space, which is gymnastics, only gymnastics, and is made for gymnastics. The second option would be to add a fifth gym to the end, there's four gyms now, we'd add a fifth gym on the end, and that gym would include a gymnastics pit, so that it could be converted and used for gymnastics and gymnastics training. And then the third option would be to do three plans, so you'd do a plan for the, the gymnastics gym, you'd do a plan for the convertible gym, and you'd do a plan for a gym without the convertible, so that if, so our three options would be to do a gymnastics gym, a convertible gym, or both. And that's, that's, so that discussion will take place at the work session. So I'm trying to be very clear, we want a discussion on the next three years of gymnastics without getting into all of the long-term aspects of it, and then we want a separate conversation on the long-term.
But you just brought up my, my concern, and my request was going to be that we consider the second part of that discussion first, and that we make a commitment that we are moving forward with plans, and I thought this board had made a recommendation that we would be pursuing a, an RFP for architectural design of a gymnastics gym.
Bruce, we asked for that, but there's been feedback from building administration and others that have asked for a convertible, if we're gonna spend the money to do a convertible fifth gym, and so we need to have that discussion, it needs to come back to the board for a discussion, so we haven't moved forward, or hasn't moved forward on doing an RFP for a gymnastics-only room.
Well, we still could have that discussion prior to voting on the, on the...
But we have a workshop, and we have a board meeting, and we have to, we have action that we need to take to give clarity to the gymnastics program for the next three years. And so that has to take place at a board meeting, and the board meeting comes first, so unfortunately, we can't reverse that order.
It is unfortunate, since the first request has been on the board since about three years already, to take a look at a gymnastics gym, and that now, in the last week, I guess, or something, we've come up with other ideas, when there wasn't enough money for a gymnastics gym, so that a program could be kept whole, that is, whole today. So I just need to let you understand, that was my request, I will not be able to support a temporary lease when we aren't taking care of the long-range problem.
That is understood, and, and you will be able to vote.
Mr. Chair, while we're on this subject first, I would point out that if the, if the wrong decision, in your opinion, is taken first, you have the right, because the next meeting is a different meeting, to move, to reconsider. Technically, you should be, you would want to vote in a way that allows you to do that, but I mean, it doesn't stop you in the next, in the workshop, from trying to fix an error that you think was made. The second thing I want to...
In the workshop or in the next board meeting?
Well, I think you could do it in the workshop, I mean, but we can think about that some more, but in the meantime, there are gonna be a bunch of people there, they're gonna want to speak, and I would hope that the agenda committee would set a hearing for the public on this to occur before, after the public has heard the proposal. I, I think there's people coming and, and just speaking at the workshop, and they don't know what's gonna happen, and, and they don't know the rationale, but, but, so I would request you consider having a, an informal public hearing.
I think at this point, Jerry, we, the, the plan, from what we discussed at the last agenda-setting meeting, was that we would have public input prior to our, so we'd, we'd have, we'd have public input at the very beginning of the, like we always do, but not for gymnastics specifically. We would be open again for public input right prior to our discussion on gymnastics in the work session.
That's good, and I would encourage the administration to have an opportunity to present the options before the public speaks, so that they're not acting in a vacuum.
Okay, that's, and that's good, good input. Yes, Monica?
So may I suggest a topic for the November 7th session?
Let me finish the topics that we're gonna cover, and then you can.
Okay.
So the, the first was the gymnastics discussion, as we just discussed. The second item on our work session agenda is a New Tech High School update, and the third item on our work session agenda, and I'm, I think I'm giving them to you almost in order, summer programming update. So now, Monica, would you like to suggest an item?
So my question to you, Mr. Chair, is if we, if I can suggest an item for November 7th session, not for October 3rd.
November 7th?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would like to suggest that we have a presentation about the history of the Wilson Building, that kind of explains what has happened through the time, about if we have received or not offers about it, and what have, what type of assessments have done, have been done at that, and after we have that presentation, we can, we can discuss as a board what will be the, the intent that we have about what to do with the building, so we can solve that.
Then would we be asking the superintendent to delay negotiation on that building until November 7th, when we discuss the future of it, or is this...
No. No, because he's, 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 he's working in a, in a negotiation, and if by November 7th, that hasn't been solved, then we will have in the agenda, that we will have this discussion, and everybody will know about it. If by November 7th, he came to an agreement with, I mean, no, this doesn't have anything to do with, with that negotiation, if he came to an agreement with everybody, well, then we will talk about it.
Does that sound fair to the...
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I mean, the board will still have to approve an agreement, but I, as a board member, would be thrilled if the superintendent came to an agreement that he thinks the board is likely to approve, and, and so that we could have a concrete thing to say, yep, we can do that, or no, we can't.
And I think that most of us would, Jerry, but I don't want to create an impression that we're open for any suggestions on November 7th, and then have someone come and say, but you said... So, Monica?
So, no, just to clarify, what I'm looking for is that the superintendent continue to negotiate with the Little Saints Academy people, with, with the people that are wanted to sell. So I want him to continue to negotiate, and by November 7th, we will have an update or not about what had happened on that negotiation, it might take that long, or maybe not. But at the same time, I wanted to tell the public that is in the audience, and the people that are waiting for us to hear a response, that we will have a presentation, and we will have a conversation about what intent is with the building on November 7th, regardless of what had happened with that negotiation.
Okay, so Mary, if you're listening, November 7th, please put on our tentative workshop schedule. So, Mary, if you're listening, November 7th, please put on our tentative workshop schedule, an update on Wilson.
Al, can I speak for a second? I voted against what we're doing right now because I thought it was very nice, consider that we moved Wilson up because we have members in the audience. We also have members in the audience waiting to do presentations that have been sitting here very patiently. Can we move this along because that's inconsiderate to that group?
Shannon?
I just want to clarify for people that the October 3rd meeting is in St. Augusta? In what building?
It's in St. Augusta City Hall. And I would like people to understand that that was done long ago. This is not an attempt by the board to move it somewhere inconvenient just for, for the fact that it's a gymnastics discussion.
And then, in November, where are we?
We made that move several months ago. November is, Willie, do you know?
Madison.
Madison? The November workshop will be at Madison. Okay? Yep. Okay. So, now, we're going to go back to, that, that does it for that. Now, we're going to move back to item B in information items, which is our enrollment report. Amy Scalerud, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Dogger and Superintendent Jett, members of the board. I'm going to, I'll slide it up and down as we start to talk because it doesn't quite all fit on the, on the overhead projector, but you do have this in your board packet as well. So, what we're going to look at first is the total K-12 and alternative sites line. This is what most, most closely ties to our general enrollment. And what we look at every year at this time is the second Friday count. So, for this year, that would be September 14th, which was last Friday, where our student counts are. And then, again, this count is based on actual student bodies. And so, the numbers do vary slightly when we look at end-of-year data. That's based on average daily membership. This is a true student count based on that given point. So, the total K-12 and alternative sites number that you see in front of you is 9,780. Last year at this time, we were at 9,688. And so, that is an increase of 92. And it's kind of, there's ebbs and flows as we look at various grade categories. So, we'll focus for a minute on the elementary section at the top. So, the elementary enrollment, if you look at the numbers, we are at 4,897 this year compared to 4,753. And so, that is an increase of 144 students. And in elementary, we're considering K-6. And so, that count does include the sixth-grade students at North and South as well. And the majority of this increase, or half of this increase, is coming at the kindergarten level. So, when we look at our kindergarten count this year, we are up 85 from what our kindergarten count was last year.
Can I interrupt just for a second? Just for, for clarity for anyone out in the audience, if you, if you need us something signed for St. Cloud State, Mr. Jett is out there signing right now. So, please bring your forms forward to, to him. Thank you.
So, that's the bulk of the elementary increase. The rest of it is, is pretty proportionately spread by grade level. And then, the junior high, both North and South have decreases from where we were at last year. North down 23 and South down 33. But, that's really primarily attributed to a large, last year's eighth-grade class, this year's ninth-grade class. So, if you look at the grade eight counts for North and South in the 2017 column, you'll see that that was particularly large class size compared to where this year's current seventh graders, which would have been in the elementary category. So, that's kind of a misleading decrease because it's not really a decrease of students necessarily coming or going. It's just class size fluctuation. And then, the high school count between Apollo, Tech, and McKinley Area Learning Center. McKinley Area Learning Center is down slightly. Tech and Apollo are both up from where we were at last year. But, overall, that nine through 12 enrollment is pretty flat. And then, at the very bottom is an early childhood presentation. We are at an increase in these early childhood special education compared to where we were at last year. The early childhood voluntary preschool or VPK, we have a set number of spots. And so, some of that is just based on whether classes are full at any given moment, but that number is typically going to be fairly consistent. Are there any questions on any of the enrollment information? Yes?
Discovery and Oak Hill both have big jumps and increases in enrollment. Is that where the bulk of the kindergarten is or is it dispersed throughout the grades? Or do we know where they came from?
So, the, Oak Hill is a, is a big contributor to the kindergarten piece. So, historically, we've had five kindergarten sections at Oak Hill. We have seven kindergarten sections this year. When it's, when it comes to Discovery, it's really distributed evenly. They're actually seeing more fluctuation and higher numbers in some of the upper grade levels than it is necessarily kindergarten, but it's a much more even distribution. Any other questions? Monica?
So, what, what are the St. Cloud Hospital, the community options to? Why do we get those, like, in specific? Maybe it don't need to ask right now, but.
So, why are, why does it fluctuate or why do we see an increase?
No, how do we get, how do we get people at the hospital? Is that because they?
Oh, at the hospital?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's typically, we provide the education for students who are inpatient. And then, there's also a residential care and treatment program at the hospital as well. So, there's a combination. And Carol can maybe allude to that too. But, yep, Clara's House is, Clara's House is part of that St. Cloud Hospital line. It includes Clara's House as well as, you know, the traditional students served in the hospital setting.
But, they're not necessarily students for another, I mean, if I get sick, am I belong to one school and then I go to the hospital? Do we get services there or what?
We do. We provide the service and then we claim that student and we receive the general education funding on that student while they're being served in that program.
And why this student gets counted as an alternative site and not at the school where they belong? Like, if I am in Tech and I get sick and I go to the hospital, why, am I counted at Tech or at the hospital?
You're counted, so this count is wherever they were receiving service as of that second Friday. So, as the year goes on, they would get reported if they go back to Tech, then they're going to get reported at Tech for the proportion of the time they're at Tech. But, this count is as of one particular day. So, Tech might be their home school, but if they're providing education and receiving education at an alternative site as of September 14th, they're included in the alternative site and not the Tech count.
Bruce?
And do we receive the same per pupil value for them when, if they're from Tech? That counts as a certain value to us from the state if they're at the hospital for X number of days, do we get that same value?
Yes. So, as long as they're receiving the same amount of instruction, so if they're only receiving instruction halftime, then it would be prorated. But, as long as they're receiving a full day's instruction, the per pupil funding is the same regardless of the site.
Is that true for any of our off-site areas in our district here?
Yeah. The, the only part that gets a little bit, that can vary from that slightly is at McKinley because there's some, there's, there's different funding mechanisms there, whether it's a self-paced program versus a traditional classroom setting. And so, some of the self-paced program and the online programs fund slightly differently. But, as a general rule, it's that set per pupil funding.
We used to have a sheriff's site on Washington Memorial Drive. Is that still?
I believe that's the group home. So, that's the one that says St. Cloud Group Home.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Chair?
When we budget, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we, we do a, I don't want to call it a guesstimate, but we, we project the budget based on a projected enrollment. Is that fair?
Yes.
And is this number what we projected or higher or lower or?
So, this is going to be slightly higher than we projected. We typically tend to project based on where we landed last year. So, you know, assuming that this holds true, that 98 or that 92 net overall increase would be about the difference between what we budgeted and what we would project, assuming that we keep all of the students all year. Now, you know, we know that there's some adjustment for actual membership, you know, as students come and go. But, we're, we're definitely up from where we had projected.
These are kids in seats now?
Yes.
Or when you made the count? And they could also go up some more.
It could potentially, yes. We receive enrollment reports every week, so we're, we're monitoring that on a regular basis.
And what is the financial significance of the 100?
So, we're still working through that. We did have a fair number of staff. I believe we've added six sections since where we were at when we budgeted possibly seven in terms of FTE. And so, you know, we've definitely spent some of that, if you will, because there were staffing needs that have arisen out of this, particularly at that kindergarten level. District-wide, we, we've added four kindergarten sections at various sites since where we started at last spring.
Thank you, Amy. Next, Dr. Beisch will provide to us the summary of the September work session and the preview of the October work session.
Good evening, Chair Dogger and Superintendent Jett and members of the board. The work session included a presentation by Julie Midas, Director of Early Childhood Services, on early childhood. And she noted and was very pleased with the new state-of-the-art Quarry View Education Center, which she stated is truly a model for the state of Minnesota. She shared the mission of the early childhood programs as well as the different programs and services that are provided to students in children birth to age five and their families. She also shared information on the current resources for the early childhood programming and the early childhood indicators of progress as well as accountability and oversight by the Department of Education. Early childhood programs include early childhood family education, birth to five-years-old, Help Me Grow referral and eval system, early childhood screening, birth to age three, early intervention services, preschool three to five, and home visit program, birth to five-year-olds. With the new center, she shared that they've been able to provide some additional new class opportunities for families. Community events continue to be held at the new center and goals for the upcoming school year focus on social emotional development, reading, and math. There also is a New Tech High School update. David Leopold, architect with IIW Minnesota, Charlie Eisenreich, Tech High School principal, and Kyle Walter, onsite project manager with ICS Consulting, presented an update. Mr. Eisenreich discussed the opportunity that staff had during workshop week to visit the site. He also shared that they have kicked off fundraising opportunities relating to the scoreboard and also started the process of connecting with specific organizations and providing presentations to obtain support in bringing enhancements to the facility. A timeline is being developed for the upcoming school year in preparation for the move and work continues with the subcommittees. Kyle Walter reported on the construction progress at the Tech site and the work in place through August. And he shared photos and drone video and also provided a budget summary. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
I have a question. Did anything get updated on the chance for the public to view Tech in a more structured manner? We talked about it last meeting.
I, I don't have any information on that this evening, but I certainly can find out. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a New Tech Tech High School update. No, it's a New Tech High School change orders totaling plus $661,171.44. Amy Scalerud will be presenting that along with Kyle Walter. And Kyle, I saw your mom was very proud of you on Facebook the other day.
Yes, yes, she is.
I don't want to restart. We really have a number of change orders, but a lot of them are fairly small with the exception of three large change orders that are making up the majority of this dollar amount. The full list of change orders is in your agenda packet. There are change orders being issued to 11 vendors in 24 different categories, reasons for the necessity of the change order. Total change order amounts $661,171.44. So, the three large change orders, the first one is MEP revisions and structural revisions. This change order is being issued to three vendors, McDowell, Bend Structural, and Soles. And the total cost for that change order, $102,687.30. And then, there are two change orders, both to Design Electric that have to do with lighting, electrical changes. The first one is general lighting revisions, which is mostly interior revisions to lighting, and Kyle can provide some more detail on that. That change order is $275,936.1. And then, there were revisions to the swimming pool lighting and that's the addition of additional, actual fixtures to provide for adequate lighting. And that change order is $83,345.32.
Amy, these are all pluses, aren't they?
Yes, yes, sorry. I just realized that it looks like it's a minus, but no, these are all increased, contract increases. Thank you for clarifying. So, I'll just open up for questions. We did discuss these at the Board Finance and Audit Committee with some explanation, but if there's further explanation, questions, discussion, we'll open up the floor for that.
Questions? Jerry?
Sometimes, a change order is measured by a existing bid. That is, you have a certain quantity of things that you will do and now you get a change order for more of it. And so, the price is already fixed and sometimes not. Are any of these change orders to vendors that have already bid a, a rate or are they all new, new quotes or bids?
Yeah. So, with these change orders and typically all the change orders you will see in here are added scope two contracts we already hold with contractors on site. So, McDowell, Design Electric, those are the contractors we have doing the mechanical plumbing, electrical onsite.
For example, the 102-
Yep.
-was a simple calculation. Once we decided we're going to do this new work, we go to the contract and it tells us the rate that that new work is going to be done?
No, no, we don't have that built into the contracts for a schedule of values. It's very hard to do considering the varying differences in everything we have here. That MEP revision, structural revisions, those are changes to some of the roof beams. I mean, I, yep.
I'm not complaining, I'm just, these are all negotiated rates that based on arbitrage or dialogue with the contractor because you don't have something in the contract that tells you what it has to be.
Yes, correct. So, we go, we issue them a set of drawings from the architectural and design team for them to price. In the meantime, between ICS and the design team, we compile what we feel those costs should be. And then, we review with that contractor if, say, they're higher than what we anticipated. We'll review the reasons why and have them adjust accordingly.
And none of them are bid. They're all quotes and, and the 275 looks like it'd be ordinarily would, and what gives you the right to do it without bidding?
So, they're under contract for this project. We don't bid. We bid the open, you know, bid for the initial part of work, but we'd run into major issues if I would go out and bid, not only timing, but also-
I'm not complaining.
Yep. But also, just trying to explain, also to have another electrician come in and try to perform a portion of design's work that they tied in, it's just not feasible for, I guess, a final product as well. So, typically, everything's issued to somebody we have a contract to previously onsite as they're already contracted with the district and we can allow for, you know, expedited.
So, the process was? So, the process was, they gave you an estimate, and then if you thought the estimate was unreasonable, you would push them to come down?
Correct, yes.
Did that happen in some occasions?
Yes. Most occasions, by the time you get these, there's been several rounds of going back and forth, whether, and a lot of times, like I said, I'll review them first, and they'll go to the design team, and then each specific discipline for that design team, the electrical engineers, will review the electrical portions specifically for industry standards.
Last question, where's the money coming from?
This is contingency items, yep.
That was my question, just to confirm that this money comes out of the contingency budget, the famous contingency budget that we can hardly make commitments.
The rapidly vanishing contingency budget.
Make commitments on it. Here's where we spend some of this money.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Al? Jeff? Could I ask? I just, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Kyle, the problem I have is exactly what you just said. These are change orders that probably should have been in the original bid spec, and for errors being made by certain people, not to be named at this time, now you've lost the opportunity to have that go through a bid process. I mean, and these are substantial changes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know, like, the lighting revision is obviously the biggest one on this. You know, these are upgrading and changing the current lights that were bid out. You're correct. With them, specific lights not being in there, then yes, maybe we do lose a little bit of that. At the same time, the specifications only list certain amount of manufacturers for these items. So, we don't have, you know, an endless array of fixtures that can be selected during bid date to allow a contractor to get specific bigs. There's a set amount of pre-approved manufacturers for these light fixtures.
And now you use the word upgrades. So, some of these change orders are upgrades?
So, they're not, I shouldn't say upgrade, I apologize. What they are is we're changing, specifically, the lighting revisions were made off of some ceiling adjustments that had to be made for mechanical equipment to fit. So, we adjusted the way those ceilings are. Therefore, these lights needed to be either changed to an angled linear pendant fixture in specific areas in between each learning neighborhood and the center area, the media area in the center of the learning neighborhoods there. Those had to be modified to fit the ceiling revisions.
And that's because the original lights were circular, and circular doesn't fit in the design?
It doesn't fit, yeah, in the current design.
How did that error get made?
Yeah, but those are, they're, part of this was the exterior lights, similar. I can't speak to how that error is made without speculating.
Another concern I have is, I mean, I like numbers. What was the original amount being spent, and what, we know it went up 275, but what did it start with? Were we close?
I believe if you look at the breakdown of that specific item that was provided, that shows what they did is they, the quote we have credited back the original fixtures and then added back in these fixtures.
Are you asking, like, what Design Electric's total contract is? Like, what the total electrical work would be for the project?
What was the original bid that we approved back in January? On the same thing that we're now approving the change order on? How do those two mirror?
So, the original bid wouldn't have broken down that level of detail to just these fixtures that were being replaced. The original bid would have been for all of the electric work for the entire building, and I don't know, do you know what that number is?
I think offhand, the total electrical package is roughly nine million dollars.
And now, ten?
Yeah, specifically electrical, I would say, yes, around ten.
Bruce?
Well, I guess I was going to kind of ask that same question, but I was going to do it on the swimming pool. You know, so we increased our expenses for lighting in the swimming pool by eighty-four, $83,000. How much is the total lighting? And this isn't running the wires, those are all there. This is just fixtures.
So, this would be, this would include additional wiring and roughing. So, what, I guess, this one specifically, Design Electric went back to us and turned in an RFI stating they felt the lights in the pool weren't efficient, or like, weren't sufficient for that space. So, after further review, the design team came back and went, you're correct, they're not. We're going to, we need to add fixtures. At that point, we added the wiring, the conduits, the electrical, and the fixture themselves to this location. So, truly, you know, design has made it very clear, they would prefer no change orders, but at the same time, they want to make sure they're doing a service to their local district and making sure our final product is the appropriate product as well, you know, that will be efficient, will work, and not have the district spend money after the building's up to add lights a different date, so.
Jerry?
Yeah, I want to make clear, and I do a lot of construction projects, I'm trying to do less and less, but the reason that you have a contingency fee is, a contingency account is because it's very, very difficult to do a project like this and always on everything. And sometimes the design is flawed in the sense that you do the construction and you have to do it over again, and you're angry at the designer because he got you into a hole, but these are things that if he'd have discovered it at the time, it would have had to go in the bid, and I think it's an open question. You're saying, well, since we didn't bid it, it would have been less, but that's not necessarily true. This contractor's already mobilized, the contractor's already there, he can't make us approve the 275. We can say, well, heck with that, you know, if you're going to be unreasonable. So, I, this is money likely, all or the mass majority of it, we would have had to spend anyway if the designer had recognized that this was going to be a cost. It's unfortunate, but again, if you can get a project done and not have to spend the entire contingency on things like that, you feel really fortunate.
I hear what you're saying, Jerry, but it's money being spent, but it's money being spent by one party that's onsite that didn't have to bid for it, and it could have went through the bid process before if it actually would have been included in the right design in the first place.
Yes, but in the bargaining that goes on, when you have reputable contractors, if they take advantage of this and demand an out-of-line amount, people don't want to do business with them anymore. And so, it, you're assuming that somebody else would have added this in for less, but I mean, that could be, and you're right, it would have been better to have it in, but it's just not at all clear.
Yeah, and if I may, with that lighting revision one specifically, the quote for just the light changes was $260,000 just for material. There's minimal additional labor added to this whatsoever, so the remaining fifteen was for minimal labor and whatever the contracted markup. So, I agree, you know, with those items, may have one contractor gotten a little bit price, better price from their vendor, maybe, but typically, when it comes to material-wise, we don't see a very big fluctuation on the material between two contractors. We see it with how many labor hours they have bid to accomplish this project.
That kind of brings me to my next question. What's prevailing union wages for an ironworker? State average is $30.82?
I would have to look at what the prevailing wage is on this project, what the rate is.
You know, and that's kind of what I'm getting at. Now, a certain vendor, it's, we're paying $125 an hour.
Yeah, so, I mean, ultimately-
Are we being gouged?
No, the prevailing wage isn't, I wouldn't consider the prevailing wage, our mechanical, electrical trades make more than the prevailing wage onsite.
Structural steel.
But even structural steel, an ironworker is going to make more than the prevailing wage. So, they're going to, there'll be carpenters and other trades, concrete workers, that that prevailing wage sometimes will be more than their typical wage. But when you have a union contractor bidding a project, their rates are already, with fringes and everything else, already higher than the prevailing wage.
Yeah, I just can't get my head around it. Hundred and twenty-five bucks is thirty, and then you have to pay a 10% premium on top of that, their wages, above and beyond.
Yeah, it's, I mean, typical, I guess. I know that doesn't help, but I mean, that's, I mean-
It's just frustrating.
Any further questions on this? We're looking for a motion to approve the change orders for the total, plus $661,171.44. Jeff's got a question.
Sorry, guys.
Nope.
I'm looking at the information you sent after finance. One of the pool revisions was it was one each for an item, and it cost $52,000.
Okay, so you, that MEP revision?
It was that, yeah.
Yeah, so that is the unit, the mechanical unit itself, was not sized large enough to provide the appropriate air for the pool. So, that pool unit was upgraded to provide the CFM we needed in the pool.
Is there a common company making these airs? Because that worries me.
There is, and I believe between Mike Spanier, your owners rep, and Willie, they're working at setting up a time with that person, or those people specifically, to have these discussions you're, about the questions you're asking tonight.
Is there any more stuff they've already said we need that we're like, whoa, we better rethink that now before we get too far down that road?
At this point, as the construction manager of things, we've asked the design team to look ahead and forecast, or try to get ahead of these issues without contractors finding them for them. We've asked them to go ahead and please do your due diligence on your drawings and look ahead and try to help us with this. At the same time, we continue to go through and try to minimize any additional changes they might try to add that we feel are not appropriate or not needed at this point, so.
Kyle, are the contractors generally finding them before they do the work?
Yes, correct. So, I think everything you see here, there's only one item on the list for this month. That was an item that had to be revised after it was installed. That was a sewer to the concession stand that had to be upsized. Otherwise, all these items generally are, truly, our contractors are doing an amazing job of going through, prepping their work, and catching any of these before the district would have to pay twice, so.
Jeff?
All right. I know it's semantics, too. I think we had this conversation. In here, there's three or four spots where it's remove one level of steel. It's not really removing a level of existing steel that's in, it's removing it on the plans, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, no money was spent, no money was lost?
Nope, nope. So, a lot of these, you'll see every month, you'll probably see some items that say scope adjustments. This is items, errors of installation, where we have had to pay one of the contractors more money to fix another contractor's issue. This is us changing those dollars hands. Zero come out of the district's pocket, but those dollars get, we take it out of one contract and move it to another to cover those errors or fixes that need to happen onsite. So, that's typically, if it just says scope adjustment, that is what that is. That's us moving between two contractors' dollars and don't cost the district, it doesn't cost the district any money at that.
Like the damaged beams?
Yes. Yep, yep, correct.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
Okay. So then, now we're looking for a motion to approve. We're looking for a motion to approve change orders to the New Tech High School totaling plus $661,171.44.
I move.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the vote?
Maker of the motion, Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Bruce Henshaw.
Yes.
Al Dalgrin?
Yes.
Jeff Polriss?
Yes.
Bruce Moes?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Super. Amy, stay right where you are.
Yep.
Kyle, we'll see you later.
Yeah, thanks.
Next, we have the approval of the preliminary levy certification. Amy Scalaroud.
So, what we're looking at right now is the 2018 pay 2019 levy. This is the levy that will be certified for revenue that's recognized in fiscal year 1920, just for a little bit of background. The district's levy is broken into three general components. We have the general fund portion of the levy, community service or community education portion, and the debt service. So, we'll look at each one individually. Within the general fund levy, there's a variety of subcategories, so you'll see those listed there, starting from general operating type funds, referendum and local optional revenue, going down into more categorical things that are levied for specific purposes, such as operating capital, safe schools, career technical, facilities, building leases. So, all the categories are listed. You'll notice that we have no levy currently on the referendum levy line. All of the district's per pupil funding comes in a combination of lines two and three, which are board-converted referendum and local optional levy, and those two account or equate to $724 per pupil total between those two lines. So, from a general operational standpoint, that is where the majority of our funding comes in. You'll see slight decreases on those lines for this levy that we are proposing this evening, just due to some enrollment adjustments from prior years where we had declining enrollment. Then the operating capital line, line five, I do want to point out this line, there's a fairly significant increase on this line, which is making up about a third of our total general fund increase. I do want to clarify that that's not, it's not really truly an increase in total revenue for the operating capital fund. However, it's a shift between the percentage of the operating capital revenue that comes in the form of levy as compared to aid. So, MDE does a calculation based on total tax capacity and some other factors to come up with what that split is, and so our percent of how much is levy versus how much is aid is increasing. So, we won't really see new money to spend, per se, in the operating capital fund. We just see a shift in the distribution of the funding. And then some other small adjustments in some of the categorical lines for safe schools, career and technical, achievement and integration. A lot of those increases or decreases have to do with adjustments from previous years. And then there is an increase in the long-term facilities maintenance levy, offsetting decrease in the building lease levy, and some other decreases in our TIF and other abatements and adjustments. So, total general fund change, $358,212.73. Moving into community education, our community education levy tends to be very consistent from year to year. We don't see a lot of fluctuations. Most of those are either set dollar amount levies, or they're based on population, so the population tends to kind of move in the same relation as total tax capacity, and it doesn't change the overall levy, as opposed to some of the general fund levies that are pupil enrollment-driven. So, some minor increases and decreases there. Overall, total net increase, $8,497.10. And then the third component is debt service. So, debt service, we actually have a decrease in the debt service levy for 2018 pay 2019, and really, the majority of that, or all of that, really is coming in the required debt service levy for existing bonds. So, the district is required to levy at 105% of what our principal and interest payments are, and then if we end up with collections that are sufficient and we don't need that extra 5% to account for unpaid taxes essentially, then they do what they call a fund balance adjustment if our reserves get to a point where they're too large. And so, what you're seeing there is a reduction in the levy based on excess fund balance. So, overall, when we combine all three components of the levy, there's a total net increase of just over $284,000, which equates to a .94% increase. And just one thing to note, last year, we did have a 2.3% decrease in the levy, so over the two years, we're still at a net decrease from where we were at on the 2016 pay 2017 levy. Are there any questions on levy?
So, Amy, with a .94% increase in the levy, based on normal growth levels of the tax base of the city, wouldn't that mean that most homeowners would see little to no increase, and in fact, they may actually see a decrease in their, in their personal school property taxes?
From the school portion, correct, because the, our .94%, the tax capacity actually grew at a greater rate than the .94%. I don't have that number handy, but there was a relatively large increase in that net tax capacity this year, so yes, there's more to spread it out to.
So, an individual homeowner should, an individual homeowner with this particular levy should see a decrease in their school property taxes next year?
All other things constant, assuming no changes in property valuation?
Yep.
Things like that, yes.
Bruce?
Amy, I've got just a couple of quick questions. You said that our total board-converted referendum and local optional levy is, comes to $724 per pupil. Isn't the state average $1,000 approximately?
I think it's actually more than that now.
It is now.
Um, there's been in the last year to two years, kind of a, a wave of operating referendums that have been passed. I don't know what the average is, but, um, especially when you compare like-sized districts, uh, to us, um, you are definitely are not seeing very many at that seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-dollar per pupil point.
Okay. And then, um, just a quick one on, can you tell me what's the difference between the equity levy and the achievement and integration levy?
So equity levy is a little bit misleading. Equity levy is really just, um, kind of a, a component of, of the general funding formula. I'm, I'm not really sure why they haven't named equity. It's not equity in the sense of-
Is it an equalization?
Yeah, yep. Um, and so it's, it's really just kind of a split of, um, how the, those funds get allocated. The achievement and integration is the one that truly ties to the district's, um, equity achievement integration.
And then my last question was, the early childhood levy, do we levy maximum that we can in that or not?
We do.
Okay.
Yep, those are all set by, um, by state. And, um, that's actually brings up a good point. Just if you look at the, um, what's in front of you for the actual action item, um, these are the numbers as of right now. Um, they don't tend to fluctuate now, much now between December, uh, between now and December when we do the final levy certification. However, what we always certify to the county, um, at the initial proposed is to certify the maximum so that if MDE does tweak calculations slightly, um, up or down, it allows the district to make those adjustments and not, um, you know, potentially lose revenue in one category, um, because something shifted in another category. Uh, so what you'll see is an action to certify the maximum, but based on MDE's current levy runs, these are the numbers that are associated with our maximum levy authority. And last year, there was no change. The numbers were exactly the same from September to December.
Jerry?
Really glad, uh, Mr. Chair, that you raised the point about the, the impact. If we were a city, we would be passing a levy, the, Amy would be calculating how much money we need, and then we would be passing a mill rate. And this would, uh, the reporter would be sitting here and we would put headlines saying the mayor proposed a tax decrease. But you can bet your bottom dollar tomorrow, we're going to see a headline, and she doesn't write the headlines, but it's gonna say, District seven forty-two passed an increase. And maybe we need to work, get you to work together with our public relations people and we ought to be rela-, issuing a press release because this is a tax decrease. And, but cities are required to levy amounts rather than mill rates. So that'd be my first point. The other point I want to make to Mr. Henshess's point is that, um, Sartell is raising their levy, but they need it, they built a new high school.
But we plan better, is that your point?
Well, it has to do with, uh, where it's easy to pass levies and where it's not, but, I'm glad that they recognize that they need one because there are costs associated with the new high school and maybe someday our community will, you know, do the same.
Mr. Chair, could I just point out one other thing?
Yes.
Uh, and that is, this is all general fund dollars, the, the front page, the sixteen million.
Yep.
If, if the state were to pay its share of the special education cross subsidy and eliminate that and the EL cross subsidy, we'd virtually have no reason to be, uh, passing levies on the local citizens of their, for their property tax. Now, I'm not saying we wouldn't, I'm just saying, uh, but certainly we would not have need for this kind of dollars. We, all of this local money doesn't even offset the, um, costs that the state force upon us, uh, without appropriate funding.
Correct. And particularly if you pull out lines ten and eleven, cause those are, are truly not general operating costs, those are capital and facility costs. So if you back those off, you know, our total actual general fund levy is, to your point, less than that cross subsidy amount.
So I would remind us, this is an action item, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty, shoot, that's the-
Two thousand eighteen pay two thousand nineteen.
Twenty eighteen pay two thousand nineteen preliminary-
I'll make that motion.
Twenty nineteen, okay. Preliminary levy.
Excuse me. A motion again.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, Bruce and Monica. Uh, is there any further questions or discussion on this? If not, Bruce, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Moes, yes. Second maker of the motion, Monica Segudas-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Henshess?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Jeff Polrice?
Yes.
Al Dolgren?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Next, we're looking at the approval of Minnesota Department of Human Rights Agreement and Plan, and I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Willie Jett.
Good evening, Chair Dolgren and members of the board. Uh, as you know, over the past months, we've worked with the Minnesota Department of Ed- the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to address the discipline data disparities identified by the state. I'm first appreciative of the collaborative work done by many of the folks in this room and count myself fortunate to work with that dedicated team. Throughout the process, our team has remained focused on the safety and well-being of both students and staff and prioritized community and family engagement. Tonight, Dr. Weiss will present the details of the plan to the board and our community, and Executive Director Bo will also provide insight into the implications of our proposal.
All right. I'll kick us off. And also operate the, there we go. How about you do it for me?
I will do it.
Okay. So, um, as many of you know, District seven forty-two is one of forty-three districts in our state that's been invited to participate in a statewide effort to address the disparities in our suspension and expulsion rates, uh, in an effort to, um, uh, see what difference that's going to make on, in the impact of achievement in our districts. The department, we have mutual goals, um, that we, um, have in, um, between the Department of Human Rights and the district, and those goals are to ensure that learning occurs, as, uh, Superintendent Jett said, in a safe and supportive learning environment, that every student in our district has an equal opportunity to fully participate and to be successful, uh, and to have a quality education, and that the district applies its student discipline policies and procedures in a consistent manner. We also have mutual commitments, um, between the department and the district. Uh, those commitments include working together on behalf of all of our district students to ensure their success and to collaborate and to use our best efforts to improve student academic achievement by reducing out-of-school suspension outcomes for students, uh, to the maximum extent possible, um, while keeping students in school. The ongoing work, um, that we have been doing in District seven forty-two is recognized in the agreement. Um, it recognizes that work, um, and celebrates that work, and that work includes the elimination of zero tolerance policies, except where they are required by law. Um, we also have an in-school suspension policy that's designed to result in less adverse effect on our minority students while still holding, um, students accountable and, um, ensuring that we are not, that we're separating students when necessary from the rest of the student body. It also includes a robust and fully implemented positive behavior intervention and support program, restorative justice practices, culturally responsive instructional practices, social and emotional learning and supports, as well as additional staff training and classroom management, conflict resolution, and ways to de-escalate classroom behavior that's disruptive and, uh, conduct, misconduct that's disruptive. We also have programs that, um, are geared towards engaging families. Um, we work towards educating students on conflict resolution skills, and the district has spent a significant, um, um, amount of, uh, resources, uh, to provide all, an in-school alternative to suspension. There is a statewide diversion committee that's been, um, uh, uh, put together by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, which we will participate in. And the purpose of that committee, um, in working with, uh, the participating districts is to review and analyze the statewide suspension data. Also, we will be reviewing and analyzing suspension practices, um, in these school, forty-three school districts, uh, public school districts and charter schools. Uh, we'll look at developing legislative proposals that will have a positive impact on reducing suspensions and expulsions for students of all races, genders and ethnicities. Um, also, we'll be working on developing and recommending best practices for school district administrators and staff. And Teresa can take it over from here.
Okay, the term of the agreement will begin upon, uh, upon approval by the school board. The Department of Human Rights has already executed the agreement, and so upon your consent to the agreement, uh, the agreement will begin and it will extend through September first of two thousand twenty-one. Um, the plan, each of the school districts had to submit a plan for how they will, um, engage in practices that will implement the intentions of the agreement. Our plan, um, includes all of the work that Dr. Weiss just cited, and that it embeds the oversight responsibility for execution of all of these strategies with the school board and the superintendent, while district level and school level administrators, um, are, have their efforts coordinated in being really focused on the strategies that will reduce those exclusionary practices. The plan requires us to report to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, uh, twice a year, beginning with our first report on February first of two thousand nineteen. We'll be working, um, together to develop matrices that will monitor the various aspects of the plan, and so we'll be developing, um, for ourselves what that report structure will look like. Uh, I think finally, I, as was clearly important to the board and to all of us that, uh, lead our school district, we wanted to make sure that as we entered into this effort, that everyone understands that school safety is still paramount. Uh, the statewide initiative is aimed at reducing unnecessary exclusionary discipline, um, because we know the long-term impacts that that has on both student achievement and student engagement over time. However, school safety is still at the forefront, and nothing in this agreement limits the discretion of the school district to monitor, um, student behavior based on our code of conduct and to engage in necessary suspension practices when those are required to keep the school safe. Questions?
Jett? Tracy, does any of the embedding process here involve staff other than District seven forty-two staff?
No.
Will there be any additional staff added to adhere to this plan?
I think only to the extent it's part of our ongoing work, and so, you know, as we've talked about, one of our strategies that we've been engaged in for the past couple of years is the behavior resource rooms in all of our schools, and so those have certainly added staff. So I think as we continue to monitor what's working and what's not working, I can foresee that there could be recommendations from building principals or from, um, the district leadership to, to see a strategy that's working and perhaps to think about whether or not additional staff would be supportive of those initiatives. But there's nothing that requires that in the agreement. All of the implementation of strategies is left to the discretion of the school district.
To continue doing the good work we're already doing.
Exactly.
Bruce Henshess?
I, I would just like to say I've read through the document and it's, uh, I feel very proud of what you have produced or what our staff has produced that we're sending down. I think it's stated, um, very well, and, um, and I hope maybe the newspaper will run the whole thing, uh, in the, in the paper. But, um, I was just wondering on page two, there were a couple of things that I thought of as I read down the list of things that we've implemented, and I, it's probably too late to add things, but, uh, the school resource rooms, our resolution rooms, uh, obviously are something that this district has done to help students de-escalate when they're having issues at an expense to the district that I think is really a, a, an, uh, intervention that could be shown to others across the state of Minnesota. And then I, the other thing that I thought of is, uh, the goal setting, the individual goal setting that we do at the start of each year with all of our, in all of our elementary buildings, which I think is just another tremendous example of how this district actually leads in a lot of areas, and that being one. So, um, I don't know if those can be added or not, but I, I think we probably could go on with many others too. There's obviously a lot of things that we are doing, uh, thanks to your leadership and, certainly has my support that it moved forward, so.
I'll have the opportunity to serve on the diversion committee, and certainly we'll have an opportunity to continue to share, um, practices that we're doing, and appreciate those reminders. You know, they're embedded in here, but they're not-
Stated, yeah, specifically, right.
Specifically, yeah.
Jerry?
I support this agreement. Uh, I had lots of reservations at the beginning, and, uh, hearing that, the commissioner invited me down to talk to me, and I wanted to emphasize in our discussion, um, that the things that are in this agreement about maintaining safety and, um, classroom control and all of those things, and I kind of wanted to hear the commissioner say that he didn't have a plan to undermine that unwittingly, and, and, um, I feel that we, you've got them bound to the fact that there are, the, one goal is to keep kids in school, but the other goal is to protect teachers and the other kids so that they can learn. And I, and I just feel that you've really done a, a, a good job of that. I just wanted to mention that I was, um, I won't say where because it'll identify the, the, the student, but I, I ran into a mom and she said, are you Jerry Von Korf? And I said, yes. And she says, oh, your wife did dyslexia for my kid, and so then she said, you know, he was a terrible troublemaker. And he was on his way into ultimate trouble and he started learning to read. And then she said that he was, um, in a responsible position in the military, serving his country, and I, I'm talking about, you know, of, a, a position, I won't identify it, but it requires lots and lots of skill and lots and lots of training, and he's gonna be a lifelong, um, a, and, and, um, that's the other thing that we're doing in the district that is gonna make a huge difference is, is because a ton of these kids that we're struggling with in class are kids that are very bright but can't read, and so the dyslexia initiative is gonna have a huge impact, and in fact, there's kids without dyslexia who aren't learning to read, and they tend to be kids that drive us nuts too because they're sitting in a classroom and they know that they're not thriving. So, so the more that we can meet their needs, the more we're gonna get at this as well. But, uh, I'll enthusiastically, uh, support this agreement.
Okay, this is an action item. We're looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, agreement with the Department of Human Rights.
And I'm looking for a second?
Second, second.
Monica?
I think Monica beat you to it.
So Bruce and Monica, uh, any further discussion? If not, Mr. Moes, call roll.
Maker of the motion, Bruce Henshess?
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Monica Segudas-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes. Al Dolgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polrice?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
And Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we move into our superintendent's report.
Chair Dolgren, members of the board, I'd like to first say thank you to all who participated in the grand opening of Quarryview Education Center. It was an outstanding event with over two-hundred people in attendance. A special, a special thanks to Speaker, Commissioner of Education Brenda Cassilius, White Park Mayor Rick Miller, Board of Education Chair Al Dolgren, Executive Director of Community Education Adam Holm, and Early Childhood Director Julie Midas, and Teresa Bonan, President of the St. Cloud Area Chamber of Commerce. Kudos and a gratitude to the White Park American Legion Color Guard and to Apollo's Victoria Janez for her beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. We are, as a district, I don't think there's anybody else in this room who's not just flat-out proud of that state-of-the-art facility and the staff within that building. The District seven forty-two Local Education and Activities Foundation, LEAF, has worked with the District seven forty-two Transportation Department to offer an activity bus for students involved in the student activity programs at district middle schools this fall. Students at Kennedy, North and South Middle Schools are able to ride the activity bus to selected community locations within the school's attendance area. If people don't understand what I'm saying, that's for after-school activities, they are being provided transportation home. There is no charge to ride the activity bus, however, students must be involved in an after-school programming, um, opportunity to qualify for a ride, uh, to this community drop-off location. I'd like to say again, thank you to LEAF and to someone that's sitting at this table. Uh, District seven forty-two gives a huge thank you to Twin Cities Kids in Need Resource Center. This year, the organization donated two-thousand- This year, the organization donated 2,365 backpacks filled with supplies to Madison Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Tullahay Community School, and Discovery Community School. Each child at all four locations received a backpack full of supplies. And I need to also say thank you to other community partners, because not just the backpacks, but we get moments like this throughout the school year that take care of our students, and I just need to say a special thank you to everyone who does that. Lunch and Wi-Fi locations for Apollo alternate day schedule include, and this is for a short time, include the Roosevelt Boys and Girls Club site, Quarryview Education Center, and Kennedy Community School, and we're extending our thanks to these sites, as well as the Apollo staff and Dreamline volunteers who are at those sites on a daily basis. Now, when I said that's gonna be a short-lived moment, classrooms have been cleared for occupancy at Apollo High School, and on Monday, September 24th, all students will report to school on their regular, everyday schedule. Yes, there is still work to be done to fully utilize all the educational spaces, but the priority is to return all students to school. The additional rooms will be cleared for occupancy in the near future. Along with that, on Friday, September 21st, there will be no school for Apollo students in order for staff to prepare for the return of all students on Monday, September 24th. I need to repeat that, but I'm sure that students will be texting all of us soon. On Friday, September 21st, there will be no school for Apollo students in order for staff to prepare for the return of all students on Monday, September 24th. What I need to, how I need to burst their bubble, there will be assignments and things and virtual learning that will be going on on that day, so students, we apologize, no we don't, we're just letting you know, that day, students will not be reporting to school, but on Monday, on the 24th, it will be back to normal. We want to express our gratitude to all the teachers, to students, and to families for their flexibility in making the alternate schedule work, and we are looking forward to seeing everyone at Apollo on the 21st, 24th, and just so that the world knows, as executives, we will be there, and that's where cabinet will be held, well, no, it won't, but we will be there in the morning from 8:00 to 10:00, welcoming all those young people back, because we miss them, because we're not always in that school like we used to be. And so to try to visit them all at once, you're going there two and three days in a row to basically see everybody, but on the very first day, as a district leadership group, we will be there to assist with that transition. And that concludes our superintendent, my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Willie. Now we move into committee reports. First up is Board Development Policy and Governance, Shannon Haas.
We met this August 28th, and we're making great strides on the governance policy handbook, and we will continue, we meet next, this coming Tuesday, and we are continuing on that process. A reminder to the Personnel Committee that we're hoping you will outline steps to the superintendent's evaluation process, and that we can include that in the governance policy. Our hope is that we can present this to the three incoming new school board members, and a reminder that we are having our board retreat Wednesday, December 12th. I have emailed out all the candidates running for board positions that date, as well as our reorganizational date, Monday, January 7th. This past meeting that we met, we also took a look at the naming district's facility policy before it came to the board for its third reading. We had a recommendation from the Personnel Committee that a policy is created regarding settlement agreements, and we agreed for the need of a policy and kind of are turning it back to Tracy and the Personnel Committee and HR to come up with a draft that we can take a look at there. Gary joined us, and we had a conversation per request that a board member participate in a board meeting while they're not present, and after it's reviewing the technology complications and making that work, we thought we came up with an idea, but that didn't work. We looked at maybe moving the December board meeting date, but that's not possible, so at this time, we were not able to make that happen, but a board member can watch and listen to the board meeting, correct? But we're not changing the date or anything. If anybody has any recommendations for the retreat date or the retreat topics, please email them to me, and we'll discuss them.
I wonder if I just ask you one thing. If you have time, you're revisiting the policy for naming facilities, or is that done?
Well, we have, we passed a resolution to move forward as it stands right now, but I have some recommendations for some adjustments to be made.
Could I make a suggestion that maybe we add to that policy, not to name a facility, but to create other ways to recognize great past service for someone that is alive that doesn't include naming something? Like I was referring to at the school board meeting, there's got to be more ways to recognize people that are alive without naming a building after them.
And are you recommending that it's put in that policy?
If that's where the board or the administration sees it would fit, but there's definitely a need.
Right, because it's certainly gonna come up again.
It will, and it probably should. There are some people that are deserving, and luckily for them, they're still alive.
So, yes, we will include that in our discussion.
Shannon, can you clarify, just on the settlement, what type of settlements are you talking about?
Yeah. So someone has an issue that may or may not entitle them to compensation, and sometimes those are really routine. It's just automatic, and maybe there isn't any calculation required, and sometimes the settlement is larger, and it requires judgment, and there's policy involved, and it might be the kind of thing that the board would have an interest in approving. It's not budgeted.
So you're not talking about legal settlements or contracts?
No, the way this would happen is, and routinely now, when there is such a settlement, that's typically recommended by the insurance company or a council, or Tracy will say that to the Personnel Committee, and then usually we'll say, "Well, that's routine. We almost didn't need to know about that." But the way we're operating right now is, everybody is trying to run the district in a transparent way so that people feel comfortable that that's how we're running, and then sometimes we'll say, "Oh, I can understand why you're doing that, but that seems like, would the board really feel that the Personnel Committee should bless it, or should the board..." The answer is unclear, and we're talking about trying to figure out if there, for example, and we don't have this example, but if a principal abused a child, and there was a settlement about that, that the insurance company, the settlement, we need to cooperate with our insurance company, but in some districts, that might not be, the board might not be told that that happened. And in this district, the way this district's being operated, we would. But in some districts, the amount might be procuring silence, and so we're just trying to sort through that. There's nothing going on right now that we should not be proud of. We are not doing things that non-transparently, Tracy's being ultra-careful and probably the most careful in the state of Minnesota and the most transparent of any school district. I've mentioned some examples before, before this administration, where I said, "Oh, well, we read some things in the newspaper." We said, "What? That happened in our district?" And so we're just trying to get some guidance on how that should be done.
Yeah, and I was just looking for clarity, because I wasn't sure if you were talking about contract settlements, or if you were talking about legal settlements, or, okay. Is that it? Shannon, any questions for Shannon? If not, community linkages and engagement, Mr. Bruce Moles.
Community linkages and engagement committee. We did not meet in September, but in lieu of that meeting, I was privileged to visit the Roosevelt Education Center, and I was, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Sorry, Bruce.
Yeah. I was privileged to be guided through that wonderful facility by the Director Katie Bukowski and Executive Director Carol Potter. Sometimes, very understandably, when we talk about the Special Education Cross Subsidy and what a challenge that is in our district, but I'm gonna tell you, just from going there and seeing how those monies are used, how they're spent, and the work that's being done there gives me, doesn't in any way lessen the concern I have about the Special Education Cross Subsidy, but it certainly is money that is doing wonderful things. Because of that meeting over there with Katie and Carol, I got a chance to meet many of the faculty members and some of the students. We're inviting Katie and Carol to present at the October meeting of the Community Linkages and Engagement Committee, and they'll have that bulk of that whole hour to make their report, and I have confirmed this with the District Director of Communications and Public Engagement, that that is going to work well. I also had a chance to visit because I had to take my car there to get repaired, a chance to visit with a gentleman, graduate of Apollo many years ago, and he's a business owner at an auto shop in our district, and he was proudly telling me about a new student event or activity that has been started over at Apollo in response to many, many other high schools surrounding us and throughout the state, and that is the establishment of a skeet shooting team. And that activity with both young men and women is at Apollo right now, and they have had competitions at the home course, which is the Delton Shooting Site, and Dave Langarood, who was instrumental in getting that started over at Apollo, is now the Activities Director of Tech, and he and this gentleman, Mike Tyson is the man's name, have now, I understand, got that activity started at Tech. So both of our high schools have skeet shooting teams, and there are many, many people in our district that profit themselves by being part of the school activities, but they just might not fit in some other activities. They just might not fit in some athletics or some arts and things of that, but they have a great propensity for the skill set that I would bet most people on this board don't have. I'm kind of looking down the row here. And so, we're inviting Mr. Langarood and Mr. Tyson to the November meeting to make their report and tell us and show us just the value of expanding opportunities for students in our school district to participate in events and activities that contribute to their social and emotional growth, and make them feel part of the district. And so I must say the one thing, the very first question I asked, and I got the answer I was hoping for, and that is that the school district does not spend a nickel, a penny, does not spend a nickel or a penny on any shells, ammunition, or guns. We're not in that business. The students bring their shotguns and their own shells, and they are supervised at a site that's very safe and controlled, and they have lots and lots of fun, and they take that competition very seriously. So we'll know more about that in November, and those will be part of my board reports. Isn't that good news, Jerry? That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up is Finance and Audit Committee, Jeff Polis.
We did meet on September 14th. Present there was Al Dolgren, Willie Jett, myself, Monica Segura-Schwarz, Amy Scholar Rook, Gary Ganji. We did have some guests there, Kyra Walter, Mike Spanier, David Leopold. We also had Sasha, who's here tonight, she's job shadowing Willie. We had many members of the Wilson community also over there. I'll briefly skip over things that we've already talked about tonight. We did talk about the sale of Wilson then, we did talk about the New Tech budget and change orders. We did have a discussion, as we've seen tonight, that we probably need this discussion, on a secondary audit for some of the projects at New Tech. Chairman Al Dolgren is concerned about the amount of change orders, and if some of the contractors are using them to increase their contract amount, he would also like to see more accountability. The committee discussed and agreed that this should, that we should consider hiring an estimating company to audit just a few sample change orders to have some accountability. We did talk about gymnastics. The part that wasn't talked about tonight that we talked about then was Willie has promised to develop a chart with details on the number of students and time used for high school gymnastics program, as well as the community education program. It was noted that it would be helpful if the number of students listed in the community ed program were not a duplicated number. We did talk about the levy, and we did talk about the profiles from M.D., and that is my report.
Thank you. Next up is Legislative Committee, Mr. Bruce Henshaw.
Mr. Chair, the Legislative Committee actually met prior to our last board meeting, and so I did go over our report at that time, but I would just point out two things, dealing with the Legislative Committee, at least indirectly, one of them, and that is, there is a League of Women's Voters School Board Candidate Forum coming up at the new district office on Tuesday, October 2nd. Tuesday, October 2nd. It would be a great opportunity for the community to come out and ask questions and hear the educational ideas of our potential school board members, all six of them, I'm sure will be there. And then on Thursday, October 11th, the Board Legislative Committee will be holding our legislative forum, legislative candidate forum, right here in this chamber on that Thursday evening. Mr. Bruce Watkins will be our forum facilitator, our moderator, and we have invited all of the local legislative House of Representatives, and we actually have the only Senate race in the state of Minnesota, and we've invited our two senators also to participate, so.
Thank you, Bruce. Next is Ms. Monica Segura-Schwarz.
We did not meet this month for Personal Negotiations Committee. We do have in the agenda that change of the policy, we're working on that. This month was, there were some things that had the staff caught up with the organization for Apollo with the fire and just going back to school time, but we are scheduled to meet again next October 10th, and then we will be working on those policies.
Thank you. And last but not least, Achievement, Integration, and Equity, Jerry Von Korf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on September 11th, and we heard Dr. Huff give a bigger version of that presentation. Whenever there's gonna be a presentation on a topic like this, there's a little dialogue about, is it useful for us to do that in the committee in advance? And they've been telling us, hopefully they're telling us the truth, that not only are they adding value to us, but we're adding value to them. So we asked some questions, and some of the things that Sylvia said, Dr. Huff said, came out of the dialogue that we had. The other thing I want to mention about the that we had. The other thing I want to mention about the committee is, there were, was a time when this committee would have an argument about whether we should exist and whether we were actually adding value and whether we were learning things that we needed to learn. And I think for the members of the committee, we, we're feeling like the people who come and present are presenting things that are really, really important and really, really engaging and that, that nobody is saying, I wish I wasn't, I wish I weren't there. And so, and that's, I think, in large part, the effort of the administration to have a dialogue with this as to what's important and then just doing a super job. And I know it's, it's extra work even though this one was done the second time. It's really appreciated. I, you know, kind of, the written report is a short report about the committee that's really not very informative and then an editorial, as I've been known to do. But, and what I'd say is I'm not going to repeat what's in that editorial except to say that what I have tried to do is report some MCA scores and trends in a different way than the state would report them. And then ask yourself and think about whether that window on what's going on is helpful to you as a board member. I'm not talking about public and I'm not asking for that tonight, but I, I, I think that we got some stuff out of the North Star Report, maybe me less than other people, but I also feel that analyzing the data in this way tells me something about how, how it in part answers the question that Monica was, was asking, but not comprehensively. And so I just wanted to raise the flag for taking in all of the data in different ways. And that was the, the purpose of compiling some of that data. And everybody finds the data, different data useful to them. Finally, at our next meeting, we're going to have a look. So you may recall that we've had a discussion in the past about the different things that the law requires for strategic planning. And one of them is world's best workforce. And then there's some other stray things in the statute that all demand that we, as a board, participate in the process of, of figuring out what is our strategic plan for learning. And that's, some of those statutes didn't exist the last time we started. And so now we're going to hear some proposals that's partly belongs to us and partly belongs to the policy people, the board development, but we're going to take a run at it and, and the chairs of the board development sits on our committee. So the, I'm sure we'll be working, working together. But just a beginning of the dialogue that ultimately has to take place in various places, but certainly at the Board of Education as to how are we going to go about strategically planning? I think that's what you're going to talk to us about, especially as it pertains to achievement, equity, and so on. That's my report.
Thank you, Jerry. So last but not least, just a reminder that our October 3rd work session will be held at the St. Augusta City Hall at 6:30 PM. If, if no one has anything else, does anyone have anything else? I should ask that positively. Seeing that no one has anything else, meeting's adjourned.